Yeah, the, yeah, the pictures weren't good.
I move we return to open session. Well, I guess we can't yet. Oh, yeah, I guess we can. I move we return to open session.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Paper?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Some more.
I move we adjourn to close session. Second?
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 Aye.
More?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Paper?
Aye.
Okay, about five minutes.
I said I hope everybody else left here.
More?
Here. Here.
Waters?
Here.
Here.
Here. Can we stand for a moment in silence here, followed by the pledge of allegiance, please? Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have one interview today. Barbara Sloniker is applying for the Events Facility and Tourism Advisory Board, I am assuming as a chamber representative. Barbara, come forward and tell us all about yourself and why you're worthy of this position.
Sure. Well, Barbara Sloniker, as the mayor said, I've been a resident of Sioux City most of my life or in the area, worked for the Chamber for the last 21 years. I have, the reason I want to be on the board is I'm excited about Sioux City and what we have to offer, and I think we need to tell our story even better than we already do. I think we're all very humble and we just think people should know, but we are really doing great things here, we have great amenities, and I want to make sure everyone knows that and they come to visit. And that's part of what we do too as the Chamber, besides, you know, helping business grow, we want to bring quality of life and see the quality of life amenities improved. So, I'm bringing my 21 years of experience at the Chamber and also marketing for the Sioux Gateway Airport, again, trying to bring travelers in and out, and there's my pitch.
Awesome. You know, this board is really coming together very well, and we have important people within the whole board, so you'll be a great addition, so.
Thank you. Well, I'd be really excited to be appointed to this board because, like I said, I think we have a lot to offer.
I agree.
Thanks for making the application.
Yes, I appreciate it very much.
I know you'll be a strong advocate for the city.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll move on to the consent agenda, which today is three through sixteen eight. Consider any item that's read as passed unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. If you want to speak on the item, please come forward as I read it, state your name and address so it can be recorded. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Again, please state your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is the reading of the City Council minutes of July 16th and 17th, 2018. Four is a resolution waiving the annual 25,000 matching commitments from the neighboring municipalities and other organizations comprising One Sioux Land.
I have a question on that.
I think you all do, go ahead.
Okay, so One Sioux Land is supposed to give $150,000, right? Is that correct?
Yeah.
For a matching fund, for, right?
Well, I believe the way originally stood, we talked about a $75,000 commitment and they would have to match it, that would be the total of 150, I believe.
The way that it was originally written was that for the total, so 75,000 per year budget each year, so a total of 150 would have to be released before the city's first year of 25. So that...
So you're asking now that you want your 25,000 every year now, starting?
No, not every year.
This is one year.
One year. One year at a time.
Who has contributed so far?
The Sioux Land Chamber of Commerce, New American Economy, which is a national partner that we've worked with, UFC Local 222. I brought a list just in case I forgot while I was up here. Tyson Foods, of course, has been the biggest one lately, and the Tyson Grant kind of sort of spans a couple of years, it span, it just was awarded in June and would be for about a year. The time period's a little bit flexible on that one. But the Tyson Grant specifically, I should note, has about $26,000 of benefit that's directly for the city of Sioux City. A portion of that is to cover coaching and technical assistance that one of our other national partners, Welcoming America, has agreed to provide, Alex is on the team of folks that are part of that, as well as Jill Wanderscheid and Marty Doherty in their departments, and working directly with the city on different welcoming and inclusion practices that you already have, others that you might want to develop, and helping to provide those sorts of resources so that you can move those projects forward. And then part of that is also, should the city decide, some of that funding from Tyson will include the opportunity for the city to become a certified welcoming community, which would set the Sioux City, City of Sioux City apart from about every other community, you know, you'd be the first in Iowa, the first in the Midwest, actually, to attain this status, and it's...
What kind of financial commitment goes along with that? Anything?
None on your part. Tyson's paying for it.
Can I have you state your, I'm sorry, could I have you state your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Erica DeLeon, 50 Sunset Drive in North Sioux City.
Thank you.
Is One Sioux Land a nonprofit? Five oh one?
No, our fiscal agent is the Sioux Land Community Foundation.
Excuse me?
The Sioux Land Community Foundation is the fiscal agent. It's an initiative that was actually launched out of the YMCA but transferred to the Sioux Land Community Foundation, and just in the interest of not creating another nonprofit to compete for additional resources, the thought was to keep it as an initiative. In a lot of communities where this type of work happens, it happens out of a mayor's office or a city government or a Chamber of Commerce, so given the tri-state nature, it's been kind of hard to find a permanent home that can be inclusive of the entire region, so that's where we stand now. But the Tyson funds do include that 26,000 that will benefit the city of Sioux City directly as part of that match, but I think the confusion before was that the original resolution was interpreted or read or written or whatever in such a way that the entire three years of funding would have had to have been complete before the city's funding would have been released. So we just asked that that be clarified so that the funding could be released each year as it was matched.
So what's the total amount of funding that you've accrued so far?
Like I said, it spans over a couple of years, but it'd be about 120,000 or so.
Not counting ours.
Not counting the, not counting the city's.
And we're doing this one year at a time, so at the end of the year, we can look at it and see how progress you've made, correct?
Absolutely.
So we're just voting on one year, we're not voting on three?
Correct. Just clarifying this, since the matching funds have been available, we're releasing our first-year funds.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Five's a resolution accepting a donation of Barksen Recreation Foundation for the Longlines Family Recreation Center climbing wall. Six is a motion approving annual athletic maintenance request for capital improvement funding. Seven's a resolution amending a position classification manual by adding a waste water treatment plan assistant superintendent in utilities department. Eight is a resolution approving change order number two and authorizing final payment to Lane Crissis and Company for the Riverfront Collector well pump rehabilitation project. I read that. I have to find it now, that might not be the easiest with me and a computer. But it seemed like that thing went way, way over, correct?
The change orders were, it was...
Well, that's the question. The change orders can only be 10% of the base price without notifying council. That didn't happen here.
No, it didn't.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council Brad Pitts, Water Plan Superintendent. We bid them out, as I stated in the RCA, for this one. Because the failures had happened so soon to the previous installation, we thought that there may be some cost savings in order due to improper installation. The service provider agreement was for $5,000 to begin with, I believe. We had two different change orders, one for the repairs and then to find out that we had two other column pipe that were not suitable to be put back in. So, yes, that is true, we went ahead with the repairs and the installation to get that pump back in as we're in our, in our peak pumping season.
I get all that, but a simple email to the council saying, "We got a project, there's 10% over budget, we gotta do it." And I realize the dollar amount isn't that great compared to others, but it's just a rule that we have and it's a very good rule, and it, I don't understand why that's difficult to send an email to the council and say, "We got a problem, we need your, we need your approval right away," or "We're just telling you so that when it comes up, you're not surprised," and I don't understand that, and you're going to be in a position in the future where this is going to happen again, and I don't know who's not giving people that direction around here, but it's a pretty ironclad rule that we have in Nevada, since Dr. Paul's rooted here as a young man years ago. So I would hope that we would not have that happen again. Nine are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing lead-based paint hazard reduction program grant application to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. B is a resolution authorizing the Police Department to accept the Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program Fund. Ten are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the 46th Street Bridge over Floyd River Project. B is a resolution rejecting the bids received for the Convention Center renovation project. C, a resolution adopting...
I have a problem with that, too. This project went over $2 million over budget, right?
The bids are about $2.3 million over the engineers, or the architects', excuse me, estimate.
For the two combined?
For the two combined. We're recommending rejecting them.
For 11C and for 10B.
Yep. Oh, excuse me, Dave Carney, Public Works Director.
Well, Don, I thought you told me something a little bit different. Or maybe I missed...
They're rejecting this one.
The total budget for the project was 4.8 million. $2 million was set aside as estimate for the pre-function space and the ballroom remodeling, and then 2.8 for 140 stall parking decks.
So that's...
4.8 altogether.
And then the design that came out of the...
And then there was the design that we've already spent.
That came out, that came out of the four, the 2.8.
Okay, so we're, we're going to delete this?
We're going to reject the bids.
Rejection the bid, okay.
Rebid, but they're still going to come in over budget.
Well, see, that's the problem I have, because if we rebid it, we're going to have to take stuff out of this project now.
Yeah, we're going to take the storage out, we're going to change some of the flooring, there's going to be some other, some other modifications that hopefully reduce the cost. It's not going to bring it within budget, but the idea was to bring it in. Also, we did have an issue with the low bidder as far as what their bid was, so if we went to the second low bid, that's another $88,000, so we also felt that that was a way to resolve that issue.
You know, and I understand all that, but here the problem I have is, I don't want to have another Tyson Event Center. You know, that's what they did many years ago, they kept taking things away, kept taking things away, and here we are now, trying to make it, you know, catch up, you know, 25 years later. I don't want to see that happen because they're going to be paying double. So I don't know how to get around it, but I don't think it's a good idea.
Are those other things going to be left on as alternatives or alternatives?
No, we're going to just remove them because we already know that the price is over. Space was an alternate to remove it, the alternate numbers range from 170 to 270,000 to take it off.
Or what, just the storage?
To remove the storage from the facility.
That wasn't included anyway in your base bid.
No, that was an alt, that was alternate one to remove the storage. The base bid included the price for building the storage, alt one was to remove the storage.
Okay, well, correct me, can't you? With the storage?
Yeah.
But we did go through and have made tremendous amount of storage available to the operator now by doing a bunch of, first, we went through and purged records and created some places, we moved some storage out to CMGs, so the current operator has told us that we have adequate storage.
So with everything that they've taken out, how much have you taken out?
Tons. Absolute tons.
Of storage or dollars?
Well, if you took out Klinger's base bid and don't give him alternate two, which I don't know what that is.
Alternate two was to re-carpet the whole ballroom space instead of just recarpeting the area that's being...
That carpet's not that terribly old.
No, but the thought was is that carpet after fuse is never going to match, so you're going to have ballroom C is going to, even though the pattern will be the same, it'll just be slightly different. So we did, we asked for an...
Be about 2.6 million, right?
Yeah.
600,000 over, how are you going to cut 600,000?
That's what I'm saying, is even though we're going to cut these things, we're not going to get completely down to what the estimate is.
So that's, listen, I'm not for the project, but why have you rebid it? If it's 2.6 million, by taking the alternates out that you say you don't need...
Well, we can't award to Klinger because if you look at their alt four, we would have to accept that, which would be unacceptable to them. Their alternate four, they inadvertently wrote a number, as you can see, compared to the other bidders, they're a negative 131 and the other bidders were around 17,000.
Well, not trying to get in trouble with Mr. Gleason, but when you bid a job and you have, and you have alternates, doesn't the city have the right to accept or reject alternates and then award based upon that?
Yeah, and we would definitely want to accept...
Did he say he had a blown bid right away because you only have, right away he said it?
Yep, they called the very next day.
Well, then he's did, then he's right, technically, and you could litigate it, but you wouldn't win in Iowa, so it wouldn't matter.
Here's the problem I have, if you approve, if the council approves the parking garage, the balance of the money that's available right now is about 600,000, I believe, and now you've got a $3 million base bid for this project that we're going to reject, so you still have 2.4, and if you count out, take all the alternates away from it, you're still about $2 million too high.
You're right.
And you think it's going to come down that much?
No. I know it's not going to come down. What I'm saying is, and Don would be a better one to answer the question, is that all I can say is my recommendation is I think we'd be better off rebidding the convention center.
Okay.
I think we're, I don't think if we rebid the garage that we're going, the parking structure, that we're going to get a significantly better bid. We do have some items in the parking garage that we'll negotiate with the contractor to reduce price, we can't do that without awarding the contractor to them first.
I understand.
So, we do think there's some valued engineering that's available on the parking garage. Ideally, it's not going to, I'm thinking it's going to reduce it somewhere between 100, maybe $200,000, so it's not going to bring it down to the 2.4 that we were, or 2.5 that was estimated, but it will bring us closer, but as far as where the funds can come available, Don can better speak to that.
Any ideas?
Well, it's going to have to be TIF abated debt, and then what we've got is, when you go back and, I'm sorry, it'd be CBD TIF abated debt, and if you look at the project on the cash flows, we had extra money over the 20 years of the reinvestment district that would be there to put back in the TIF to pay it back for borrowing on the debt. So it's still, the project's still cash flows. Unfortunately, instead of being around an $8 million excess, we're about $4 million excess.
I remember asking you the question that day, is this, I don't know why we wouldn't do 10 of these projects or something stupid like that, and you agreed with it, and now I know, now I know why we wouldn't do them, and you should too.
Because they never come in what they, you expect them to.
That's true.
But we do have enough cushion that it's still positive cash flow.
That's the question I have on item 10B, is how the architect's estimate was missed by a million to a million and a half dollars. And I don't want to hear steel and concrete because I've heard that way too much. Well, I'd like to know if there's a breakdown because really the community's saying, how can you miss an estimate by a million to a million and a half dollars?
And it sounds like it was off the national average as well.
Well, I think that was the number that was used to... Well, I, I think that was the number that was used to, to put together the original rough estimates. I'm more concerned, look, 3.7, they're 50% off. I, I have no explanation, I mean, he's told me material costs, labor costs. There were some specialty items that there was only one bidder on that he thinks jacked up the price. Even that, the one item that he talked about was the parking equipment came in at 350,000. I, I did talk to Walker, who does a lot of our parking ramp restoration work. He thought, "Well, that, we usually pay about 60,000 per lane, it'd be four lanes, two in and two out, so that's still be only 240, but that's $100,000." So one of our thoughts would be is, that's one of our thoughts, is to take that out of the bid and then us go on our own and, and, and put the equipment in the, the ramp. But one of the things that Walker said on topic, I, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but was that the pre-cast concrete industry right now is just got a ton of work, so they're in, they're not cutting anybody any break. So that's one thing that usually can, you know, if their workload's lighter. He says, "In a year from now, it could be a completely different bidding atmosphere with the, the pre-cast panels." He kinda threw out some of the numbers as far as, the elevator probably costs us about 3,000 per stall. And, you know, he had just built a similar parking deck that was, came in about 22,000 a stall, which is above the national average, but that didn't have an elevator, you throw an elevator on top of that, now you're closer to where we were at, 27,000 a stall.
What would that savings be then?
What?
Taking that out?
The elevator, about 400,000 is what he estimated.
'Cause I got thinking a lot about that, obviously, 'cause I would utilize the elevator, and I was thinking about where the handicap spaces would be, what people would utilize.
There, there are no handicap spaces in the ramp, all the handicap spaces are on the ground level adjacent to the ramp behind the alleyway, that's, so there would not be, it's, it's more of the people who are going into a hotel-
Carrying bags and anything else, I understand that, but then the lower level is more for the patrons of the hotel.
Yeah.
You have to utilize both, I understand.
But the, but the lower level isn't at the elevation of the, of the hotel either, you're still gonna use the elevator on, from the lower level to get down to the hotel level.
So there wasn't a, so the architect didn't take the, the beds and do like a-
He, he, he had, he had a conversation and review there, 'cause the bid's a lump sum bid. It doesn't come broke down like our, no. So he did talk to the contractor, got the-
Talked to a local contractor, he couldn't have talked to Dicon.
No, after, after the bids were submitted, he talked to, to Steve Nelson and, and got what his breakdown was and compared it, but he didn't find anything, everything was higher. You know, I, I can't, I can't justify why the estimate, and, and, and after the first one, why you wouldn't reevaluate your second one before you put the estimate out there and still come, I, I can't talk to that, I just-
Because we're hooked and he reeled us in.
Is it that difficult of a project for the Convention Center with what we're talking about here?
I, I think the, the most difficult, at least from the pre-bid meetings that we got, was, was, was the space. It's not a, a nice space where you have lay-down areas and all that, you're crammed out, and now you have all different contractors, so Dicon has their site. You would have, Steve Nelson would have his site, and depending on who ends up getting the Convention Center, let's say if we had awarded, if we had awarded to Klinger, they would have their site now, they don't have to share space. That's why we were really surprised at Dicon's, you know, they would have had an advantage, 'cause they have the largest space, could use, laid out, you know, stretch over multiple sites, now they're gonna be kinda, each contractor's gonna be confined to their own space.
Rhonda, I understand what you're saying, but the, the difficulty I have is it, I mean, it's one thing to be 10% over, maybe 20%. If you really wanna push it and say, "Okay, 30%."
This is 50, 49.
But this is way, way out of the ballpark, and it's-
But I don't, I mean, I think if you look at our bids-
More importantly, it's embarrassing to everybody.
Yeah, but I think if you, if you look at the bids, I, I think the, the bids were competitive, I mean, they, they were close.
That's what was shocking to me, I talked with city attorney about that earlier, too, and I think that's what's shocking is, it had to be the estimate that was so far off, because all of the bids were pretty much on.
Yeah, I mean, I-
Like, $240,000 separated them, right, or something like that?
Yep. I, ideally, when I would put estimates together, I would hope to be like the second or third bidder. You know, not, I never wanted to be the low bidder, never wanted to be the high bidder, you know? I was hoping my estimate was always-
Yeah, middle of the road.
Middle of the road, so-
An item, you can go down to item 11A, which will be coming up, and your engineer there just inflated the heck out of everything to make his estimate look good, and it did.
I was gonna say, yeah.
If you look at his estimate, those prices, we haven't had those kind of prices in Sioux City ever. So he just whammed it way high to make himself look good, like, hey, I'm, look at there.
It's a wash, yeah, I thought the same thing.
Yeah, you saved 2 million bucks or whatever on that one today.
Yeah, unfortunately, you can't move that money from one budget.
Unfortunately, that's RISE money, the state, state's the winner, not us.
Yep.
I thought the same thing.
Although that estimate's unbelievable the other way.
Yeah, you don't wanna be there either.
All right.
And I did talk to Economic Development a little bit about the cash flow side of it, I think that Donna is, is speaking to. I mean, it's frustra, it's extraordinarily frustrating, I share Councilman Moore's frustration as far as how it could be off 50%, I really do. But then you also look at the type of project, and you hope that we're able to recoup that cost, and it shows that it will. I mean, you're looking at the money the Convention Center is going to be bringing in, you look at, well, and Economic Development can talk a little bit about it if you wanted to.
Well, I, I can probably speak to this also. We, we got last week the June numbers, and when you compare last year to this year, and you just look at half a year, because that's the amount of period that KENSith was operating. Last year, half of the deficit was $234,000. This year, if you add in our admin, we're about 40,000 deficit. So they have performed.
So if there's an opportunity to recoup it through that with the KENSith folks, and then you also look at the local hotel motel tax, and then you also take into account that the initial sum of money going into the Convention Center project, as well as the Parking Center project, were not tax dollars. Those were state hotel motel taxes that were going into that. So I think it's important for the public to understand that that initial five, or whatever it was, million dollars going towards that, were taxes that we are collecting as a city that we, we wouldn't have. It's this excess that does cost, and I understand why that's frustrating, but you hope that this project would have the positive cash flow that you're talking about.
On the reinvestment district, we're either gonna get between 5.4 and 5.6 million dollars from the state's percentage of the hotel motel tax. We also are gonna collect 8 million dollars worth of city hotel motel tax. Half of that is restricted by our ordinance, but the other 4 million is available to assist how we would like to, you know, use it in the Tourism Bureau or other city service parks and wrecks, so we've got that. And then you're getting property taxes that are non-TIF abated taxes, those that we set aside of 8.8 million dollars. So you've got 18-
What you're telling, almost makes me wish I would've voted for this project now.
You can always change your vote.
About when, about when was the architect's estimate given?
Right before we bid it. The 2.5 and the two, the 2 million that-
They gave you a preliminary number, that's how Donna knew what the budget-
Yeah, the preliminary numbers-
How they, 2 million, Dave.
KENSith's guy gave it to you.
The 2 million dollar estimate, and then-
The, the estimates are listed in the RCA were, were developed after the plans were done, but prior to bidding.
And you know, who's to say that after the 2.5, we wouldn't have change orders on top of that yet?
There's, yeah, there's, I mean, there's-
So, so you know, the two, that's just the start, that's not the end. So, you know, you can get a lot of change orders after the 2.5.
Mr. Nelson better have them going down rather than up.
Do we have a, do we have a legal obligation to do anything with the Convention Center?
I'll refer to Amber.
Not the parking deck, but their convention center?
Yes, it is part of the development agreement, we executed with them the improvements to the ballroom, the bathrooms, the additional space are all incorporated as a public improvement within the, the development agreement.
And how soon? Like, now?
Yeah. It had to coincide with their opening.
You'd probably wanna do it at the same time, and it makes sense.
So you're not opening something and then something else is-
I, I would say that, I know that I'm practicing law again, but be really good if we limit our exposure to the developers saying, "We're gonna, we'll do the 4.8 million, and everything above that's gonna be on your nickel." Then let them design whatever they want to, I don't care. They can just design a $12 million project, but if we limit our exposure in these projects going forward, which I'm shocked that we didn't, but lest the people that vote for these projects, it would make it a little easier to swallow here today. So-
Mayor, don't we do that in effect by having a budget when we enter into these development agreements?
When you rely upon that, that developer to give you that budget, and he wants your project, and he was in competition with others for that deal, what would you do? If you limit your exposure, you, I mean, you limit your exposure, yes, you should, but you, the way to limit your exposure is put it in writing in the future.
So you're recommending reject the bids?
Reject for the ho, for the Convention Center and then award the, the parking ramp to get that one going.
Sounds good to me, 'cause it just misses the mark by more than I'm comfortable with.
Well, they both do, I, I mean, it's, I, and if I had a, a better answer, I wish I could give it to you, but I, I mean, I'm going on the-
The other one's a little bit different, though, because that one I did review, and I think our legal obligation there is to provide 70 parking spaces.
No, if we have 70 now, we wouldn't have to build that, if that were the case.
But I think that's the way the agreement reads, but, and I am a lawyer, but I'm not reading the agreement. As a city attorney, I'm reading it as from what I can, can see, we have seven-
That'd be great if that's the case.
Well, I'll take a look at, and anything over 70 spaces, they have the option to use if they have an overflow, but our only obligation, I think, is 70 spaces.
The, that's in the parking agreement, the development agreement does require us to build the two-level parking deck.
It states specifically two-level?
Specifically a two-level parking deck.
I stand corrected on that.
And then the, the parking agreement says that they are guaranteed 70 spaces for their sole use, and the additional spaces available if necessary.
You got a lower one, then you drive up around, and you got one up above.
Yeah. The Marriott flag also requires them to have the 150 spaces in order to get the flag.
And the, one of the, the second deck then will be available to the general public?
No.
No?
That's what they tell you, but it's not gonna be, it's gonna go to this hotel and their employees, and, and their people that go, that stay there. They have barely enough parking at that rate.
Which means their hotel would be full. Wouldn't that be nice?
And Donna's projections really look good.
If they're, if they're full, then my numbers go really well. Because I did discount the rates.
When I told you guys not to spend $279,000 on that parking lot that we're tearing up because of this project, the boot, that we don't wanna talk about, that-
I was not up here agreeing with that.
Yeah, well, he missed that one, but-
One, one last thing I would say, Dave, though, while you're up here, but is I do share Rhonda's concerns quite a bit as far as comparing it to the Tyson Event Center. I think you talk to any person that was here and that was done on the chief, I get it, I've heard it a million times. And I think now we're wishing that we could've done more or should've done more. I don't wanna do that with a Convention Center, I think that we have an opportunity here to capitalize on a market. I think we looked at the figures of the type of events that want to go to a Convention Center, right? And that's the whole bread and butter of getting a lot of those events into the Convention Center, filling that hotel, all of that makes cash flow sense, I get that. But I think when we start cutting things out and saying, "Oh, well, we're not gonna do carpet, we're not gonna do storage, we're not gonna do this," we're running right down that same path, and it's like, I would rather spend $300,000 now than 5, 10 million later and say, "Yeah, I, I wish we would've done it right the first time."
Well, you're gonna spend 2 million more than what you budgeted. Let's keep that in mind, which I, you know, go for it, I don't care.
For both projects, well, I mean, I'm just talking about the alternates.
The nice thing about it is if you reject that part today, then we can regroup and get, get better handle on what pieces are there, and then council has-
But Donna, we have not, you can tell me you have storage there, but you don't have storage there, we don't have storage in the Tyson Event Center, we cut that out. Now we're talking about, you know, well, we'll build another building someday, and all that sort of stuff, which is never gonna happen, so listen, I'm not for this project at all, I think it's a bad project, lost the vote, I'm moving on. But let's don't make it worse by making it cheap. I mean, it's just, listen, it's already bad, let's make it as good as we can for bad. Because I don't know where you found all the storage, but if you go back there, the kitchen was always a little bit inadequate and those kind of things, but-
And that's what I'm worried about, I don't want the answer saying, "Oh, no, storage is fine, storage is fine," because that's what, you wanna save money. I want KENSith or people that do this way. I mean, I just, I don't know, that's where I'm at.
You know, I, I wasn't here either when Tyson Events, I wasn't on the council when Tyson was built, but I think some of us are being hard about what we built back then, it was a spectacular facility, it served its purpose, we li, we lived within our budget. I mean, that's what I would like to do today, we had $2 million, make $2 million work. And that's what we did back then, and I don't think Tyson, I think you're being a little unfair about how, what, it's easy to look 20 years ago and say, "This is what it should've been or could've been," well, things changed, I mean, spoils-
The day I moved in as, as an owner, I have to, I had to put my own fence up to store my own equipment. And, and some of that was over in the other building, which is fine, I'm not complaining, 'cause we're not there enough, but it wasn't adequate enough for even the equipment they need to run the building, that's the problem.
Well, but Mayor, what I'm saying is, we didn't have anything before that.
That's right.
And now we had something, and we had, and, and the council, I think, did a good job living within their means. I mean, we're preaching that all the time, that's what the citizens are asking us to do.
Yeah, but the same guy that was in Donna's job at that time, and I'm, I don't care if he gets mad at me, the same guy stood and preached against all this stuff, now is the guy that was on that board that said, "Well, you need all this stuff." Well, you know what, it would've been cheaper to build it in the building than the addition added on now. And so, that's all I'm saying about this project, is if, if you think it's the right project, then let's do it right. Spend 400, 500,000 more, make it right.
You get what you pay for, that's what you end up with.
Anyway.
And I should clarify, Dan, I should clarify, I can't speak to what it was in the beginning, whether, you know, to what level of an experience it was, the mayor would be able to do that. I am just saying, it, to me, it looks like it was the same building that it was 20 years ago, not a lot has changed to it. And I think we need to make sure that we keep up with the times.
Well, I, we can definitely look at those since we're rejecting the bids and we're gonna rebid it. If we, if we wanna, if we wanna have them leave the storage on as an alternate, we can still do that.
Well, and I, I'm not saying that you have to, oh, yeah, you have to keep this, this, and this. I'm saying work with KENSith and say, or-
Which we did.
Whoever the managing partner, yeah.
We, we talked to KENSith about all of the different things, you know, the, the architect after the bids came in, gave us all things that, recommendations on how to reduce costs, and we did talk to them, 'cause one of those reduced, remove the bathrooms, or you know, shorten the beam that's gonna span over these, these renovated ballrooms and have columns come down, and they were, "No, we can't live with that, we can't live with that, it doesn't make, you know." And it's right, that room would've been wide open, you'd had four columns taken down.
Yeah.
It would not have looked very, it would've been tough, you'd had view obstructed seats and things like that. Yep, so there's, we did, all this has been run through KENSith, and they did, they, they were agreeable to the, to the storage being removed, but I'm more than happy to leave it on, have the architect leave it on as an alternate, if that's what we'd like, and then reevaluate after the bids come back in. And I said, we, we talked about the terrazzo flooring in the, in the pre-function space, changing that to carpeting, 'cause that'd be, it's not saving us a huge amount of money, but it, you know, we're trying to save everything we can, the biggest one's probably gonna be changing the, instead of having a brick exterior, it'll be an ephesus exterior that looks like brick. So, you know, it'll still have the same look that they had, they had put in their, in their drawings, but it'll be a cheaper material.
Well, if you can put those alternates in, and then I think having a representative here talking about them the next time, or when it comes up, would be helpful to say, "This is fine, or this is acceptable," or not.
And we'll do that with, you know, assuming that the, if the garage, or the, the deck passes and we negotiate, we'll definitely make sure KENSith comes.
You know, think about it this way, you're building a house, you got a nice house, right? You got two closets for all this big old house, where are we gonna put everything, right? Well, it ends up in the garage, or then you have to, have to put a storage container out there, and, you know, you're, then you're looking for a place to put all your stuff, that you, you need to have it where you need it, not where you have to go find it. That's, that's where I'm at.
Some people have too many garages, 'cause they have too many things, but we will move on. Wonder who that would be, we weren't gonna say anything about that.
Well, you would park them in your house, though, would you? Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
C is a resolution, a resolution adopting plans and specs for the bridge repair project, 11 actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract, Steve Harris Construction for the Bridgeport West Improvements Phase 5 and Phase 6. Where are you? You need to look at those estimates, I, I mean, I'm glad it came in under budget, don't get me wrong, but those estimates were so high. Now, if that was so to make sure we got the RISE grant covered, I'm okay with that, but otherwise-
No, I think that, I think actually the estimate was above what we, we were allocated for RISE, and I- No, I think that, I think actually the estimate was above what we, we were allocated for rise and I, I, I didn't talk to.
Those numbers compared to what the.
Yeah, I didn't talk to Howard R. Green about it, as far as, I was just happy that it was under the estimate, so.
Even his manholes, we haven't had manholes that high ever in this community, little things like that raise that, so. B is resolution approving amendment number two to the contract with RML Architects for the Milwaukee Road Roundhouse Enhancement Project. Thanks, Mayor, regarding eleven A and your comments, I agree with you, but, but aren't we, the engineers or architects' estimates are becoming meaningless, aren't they? I mean, do they still serve a purpose?
That's how you're supposed to budget.
The estimates.
Yeah, we're required, we're required, they're required to produce an estimate.
But they're becoming meaningless, aren't they?
No, I, I think they're always, I mean, you.
It's a real, truly is a question.
You, you, you're just really gonna throw it, I mean, I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, I, I didn't look at item by item like the mayor did, um, on this project and, and maybe Brett did. Um, but the estimate is really, they're, they're just ju, trying to make their best guess on what's going on in the industry and they're, they're not calling suppliers like the contractors are, like, you know, and, and they can't judge how hungry certain contractors are.
But most time they call a contractor and say, I got this much pipe and they get an idea.
Yeah. I mean, uh, what I did, I used to just look at my last couple of bids and try to base it off of that, and so that's.
Here's maybe the difficulty I'm having, and maybe that wasn't a, the right question, but at least if we had an explanation of why we're so far off either way, too high, too low, but we're not getting that, are we?
Uh, I, I can, I can add that, we can add, start adding that, if there's a, if they're outside of the certain percentage, I can have them add something.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
C is resolution awarding a contract to KNS for the Convention Center Parking Deck Project. Twelve or actions relating to property, A is a resolution proposing sell property at twenty-six oh-one West Twenty-Second Street, petitioner is James and Alicia Marksberry. B is a resolution proposing to sell property at thirteen hundred Irene Street, petitioner is Joseph Johnson. Thirteen appointments to boards, commissions and committees, A is a motion appointing Dave Bernstein to the Airport Board for a three-year term. B is a motion appointing Dave Kaplan to the Airport Board for a three-year term. C is a motion appointing Tim Batero to the Events, Facilities and Tourism Advisory Board for a two-year term. D is a motion appointing Bruce Miller to the Events, Facilities and Tourism Advisory Board for a three-year term. E is a motion appointing Susan Unger to the Events, Facility and Tourism Advisory Board for a three-year term. F is a motion appointing Tim Seaman to the Events, Facilities and Tur- Tourism Advisory Board for a three-year term. C is a motion appointing Mark Baltusus to the Events, Facilities and Tur- Advisory Board for a four-year term. H is a motion appointing Richard Moats to the Events, Facility and Tourism Advisory Board for a four-year term. Fourteen or eight, purchasing eight, is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Sterling Computer for three replacement servers. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Midwest Honda Suzuki Kubota for three Kubota tractors. C are resolutions awarding purchase order to Zimmer and Grant's System for two rotary lobe pumps for the wastewater treatment plant. Got two bids because he went and got his friend, but that's okay, you got two bids, Mark, that's good, I'm glad to see that. Fifteen are applications for beer and liquor license, see the list come forward if you have questions. Sixteen receipt of minutes, see the list come forward if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? I would love to award to that second place bidder, because I don't think he could furnish the pumps in our area, but I'm, and you know he can't either, but that's okay. Passes five zero seventeen, I hear an ordinance adopting modified site plan for one eleven third street, petitioner S E, E Partners, P and Z recommends approval of it with conditions. I'll move that.
Second.
I'm Susan Stewart, Vice Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission. We had one person speaking on this item, he was not speaking in opposition or in favor of it. We had quite a lively discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission on the item and we ultimately voted in favor, particularly after we found out that this was also already part of a development agreement. Uh, with one, um, member came before us and asked that there be a, some kind of a walkway so people can get across the parking lot to establishments like Bodega four oh-one. Our motion, uh, indicates that that's what we would like to see with this item.
And your motion does say that?
Correct.
And it sounded like, I read the minutes too, and it sounded like Jim was happy to look into that as well, right, or Hard Rock was?
It does sound that way, yes, and, you know, I don't know, I, we talked a little bit about where that should be, um, you know, something, the idea was that people want to go from Stony Creek over to the other upper fourth, upper Pearl Street establishment, so it would seem that a pathway that cut more directly from Stony Creek as opposed to some walkway that really was a sidewalk by the Hard Rock might be optimal.
I agree. I agree, the other thing that I think would be important with this one, that I would be open to, whether it's Hard Rock helping with or even, I know Downtown Partners is working with Wayfinding, but I'm definitely going to want, um, signage. You know what I mean, I think that's gonna be important, saying, you know, that the other, the Pearl Street Bar District or bars and restaurants or, you know what I mean, just directing people of where to go. That if they come there by Stony Creek or something, that they know they just need to jog right around the block or walk through the walkway.
It'll have to be pretty good signage, because these are people who might be, they might have phoned into top, they're staying at the Stony Creek, they don't have transportation. So you're gonna want to put it at a place where they can see it when they're walking about, whether it's from the Stony Creek or, um, Famous Daves.
Yep. That's something that I think's gonna be essential, is just directing people, if they're driving, how do they drive around the block? And if they're walking, obviously making that walkway as visible as possible that you can, that it is a public thorough, thoroughfare.
Yeah, and I don't know how Google Maps would do that, since it is a parking lot, you know, if you turned on your phone and put, uh, the Pearl Street District in there, would it take you round the way around the parking lot? Uh, so signage becomes even more important if you think you're gonna have to walk for fifteen minutes.
Do my concerns make sense, or?
Yes, sir. Uh, as a matter of fact, we've had discussions here recently on looking at that district and making sure that we work together to, to communicate to our guests that, all the entertainment that we have downtown and how do we get to it? And that's one of the things I talked to Reagan about today, is making sure that our, uh, signage plan for the city addresses those concerns.
Can we get your name?
My name's Jim Frankie, I'm the General Manager at the Hard Rock Casino.
Have you had a conversations with any of the bar owners or sales?
Uh, some, I have not talked to all of them, I, I met with, uh, Mr. Conley at Bodega, I met with Joe Lawler, I didn't meet with Joe, I, I talked to Joe on the phone. He's not thrilled, you know, with, uh, this passageway being shut down, but, uh, the one thing I could do is commit to him that, uh, we'll work together to make sure that, you know, since the Hard Rock's been there, and I think, uh, the city brought the Hard Rock there to drive, uh, mass visitation to that end of town, I think it's working. You know, we just got to make sure that the safety of people crossing down there is there. I think the point that Mr. Conley made at the P and Z meeting was right on point, that we got all these people coming back from the Tyson or from the Hard Rock going across to Pearl, and we had to make sure that there was a safe passageway through that area. And that's, uh, we did make the commitment to, uh, put that pedestrian passageway through.
And that it's inviting, I think you can do it in a really tasteful way or make it inviting so people see that and they want to go down, I mean, whether it's lighting or otherwise, but.
I believe we can too.
I think there's opportunity there, I just, I would hope you would continue to keep that dialogue with people downtown and with, because I think you've been a great neighbor, I think that a lot of those bars down there would say you've done very well for their business. And so I hope that that continued discussion can happen.
Absolutely.
And I do have one question I think I need to ask on behalf of the other planning and zoning members, and that is, if you do decide to, um, accept our recommendation and make that not only a recommendation from us, but your action, will you be amending the development agreement to add that, or how will that actually be implemented?
It's a great question.
Yeah. Someone will let me know. And that's really kind of where I was headed next too, is although you make recommendations, I, I assume that if we pass this, it becomes a requirement? And then who has the final say that the freestanding sign is right, the pathway, pedestrian pathway is the way we want it? Or how do we, I know it's a recommendation, but it, does it, is that just another word for mandatory requirement, or?
It'll become a requirement of the site plan in what we'll have to do with regards to the development agreement, we'll have to look into that to see how the modified site plan will affect the develop, development agreement and if there will be a need to modify that or amend that in any way to reflect the modified site plan.
So passage and then it would be the next step to see if something needs to be amended or adjusted?
That would be correct.
Anyone else to be heard?
Um, I'd like to be heard, Cindy O'Neill, thirteen twelve Forty-Sixth Street, Sioux City, Iowa. I'm a former, um, member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for seventeen years and I was on the commission five years ago when the Hard Rock came before us to close Pearl Street. And I have to say that we were adamantly against this. Sioux City is made of small businesses, I mean, it's the heart and soul of Sioux City, Iowa, and I think you're giving these bars on Pearl Street a death sentence. I realize that the Hard Rock's been good for Sioux City, but right now, I think leaving this street open is good for Sioux City. I think if this was on the other end of Fourth Street, this wouldn't be a discussion, you guys would never close that street or even think about closing that street. If that hotel said, hey, we want that end of Fourth Street, those businesses would be up in arms. And had these businesses had the opportunity to come to the Planning and Zoning Meeting, they would have had the opportunity to speak on their behalf. But as we all know, with the planning and zoning, the notifications go to the owners of the buildings, not the tenants of the buildings. Sometimes the owners don't even live in Sioux City, they don't notify the tenants. None of the tenants were notified of this, other than maybe the Bodega. So they didn't have a chance to speak at the Planning and Zoning Commission. I talked to Jason Geary on the phone and he asked two or three times, you know, about business people being here, he said he would have never voted in favor of that, approval of that, had it, the businesses been there to voice their opinion. I think we need to think about these bars and what we're doing to them. I talked to, uh, Chris Madsen with the Planning Department to ask, was there a traffic study done? No traffic study, done. So how many cars you know are gonna move off of Pearl Street to the other streets downtown? Is it gonna be, you know, congestion? Is it gonna affect them? How much is it gonna affect these businesses? I really think that you guys need to think about this when you think about closing Pearl Street. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Joe Lawler, thirty-one twenty-six Morrison Avenue, Sioux City. Uh, I'm also a co-owner of Blue Ribbon Tap. Um, I'm not thrilled, pardon?
Of which tap, I missed it.
Blue Ribbon Tap on Pearl Street. Um, you know, I, I, I did speak with, with Jim from Hard Rock and yes, I'm not exactly thrilled about this closing. I think it's, and it's not just about us, it's about other businesses further up Pearl Street. You know, that, you got barber shop, you've got Gero's Tacos, i- it's not just our district where traffic flows past. If we're talking five hundred cars a day, I don't think it matters. If you're talking five thousand cars a day that run past Pearl Street, I think it's a huge difference. You know, if, if you're talking about safety, you know, if you look at Tyson Event Center, people crossing between, across Pearl Street, uh, as traffic's coming past Gordon Drive. There's a ton of traffic going past there, how is this any different? How is this any different than traffic going past Hy-Vee i- in the parking lot on Hamilton or, um, Walmart or anywhere else, you know? You know, there's, there's multiple things about it and, you know, the, the, uh, you, you continue to grow Sioux City when you shut down intersections or streets. In residential, it's not probably as big of a deal, but when businesses rely on traffic for exposure to their business, it's a huge thing. So to me, you know, shutting it down does not make sense. You know, this was talked about, you know, and was supposedly it's solved five years ago to, for police, fire, rescue. Police station, fire station is locked between Douglas Street, which is one-way north, and Pearl Grand View, which is two-way south and north. So, you know, wha- what are their routes gonna be? You know, how do they get down to Gordon Drive without cutting through, you know, four to five different routes, where they have a direct shot to Gordon Drive now?
I bet they don't go through the Hard Rock right now.
Pardon?
I'm betting they don't go through the Hard Rock, but I don't know that.
Yeah, and I don't know that either, but I do know.
Their big rig, I'm, they couldn't get through there with their big rig, I'm sure.
No, but I do know there was a fire truck that went down through, down Pearl Street right past the bar last night.
That's possible, but it's small.
So, and it was a small truck, so.
Even if it was an ambulance, I don't think they'd want to take that roundabout.
But what if they are going to the Hard Rock? Now they have to go out and around, time, seconds count.
Two other entrances.
Two other, yeah, but if you, if you're cutting out and around, um, you know.
I, you'd never be able to get an ambulance to that entrance, I mean, I, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to.
No, I, I understand. Um, you know, wha- what is, what does police, fire, rescue's take on, you know, shutting down a, I guess, a through street, so to speak?
I'm assuming this was run by them, but I don't know that for sure. Mr. Hanson, did, did police and fire comment on these things?
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager, yes, they're sent the items for comments and on this, uh, particular item, we did not receive any negative comments from police or fire. My understanding is they utilized this vacated portion of Pearl today to access Hard Rock, but I don't believe it's used for a cut through by any means.
Go ahead.
Um, I, you know, I, I don't know, is, is all options have been looked at as far as trying to improve safety, you've got lights on Third Street, how much traffic is this gonna push on the third, onto Wesley Parkway, which is, uh, if you're trying to turn even on the, from Wesley Parkway in a Third Street, there's no protected turn signal anyway. You know, that, that intersection's already jammed up now, how much more is it gonna get jammed up once you divert traffic? So.
I'll tell you, I'm, I travel that probably more than anybody sitting here, because it, I go up to my office, which is on Grand View, but it's the same as Pearl.
Correct.
And I avoid the Hard Rock like a plague now, I used to drive through it, but not anymore, it's a, with the speed bumps and the, and the people and all that, I just come up Douglas and go down my alley, so I'm, for me, it, it makes no difference, I'm, I just won't go that street anymore. I, and if I'm gonna come back the other way, I'll find what I want to find, I do come down quite often to Fourth Street and turn and go around and not go through the Hard Rock if I'm going out to Morningside, I, I'll come down and turn there at Mid-America and get on Douglas and go out that way, I'm, it's just, I avoid that.
Right.
Area like a plague, so I'm probably not the guy to, to try to convince that it's, I mean, I get, from your standpoint, I do, I really do, and it, I, and you're right, I don't think it's not gonna have an impact on my business because people probably do go through there for Morningside clients and come all the way up, so I'm sure it will. But it's, I just don't like the, the way we have it now with the speed bumps and everything else.
I, I do have one question. When we did the, the development agreement for the parking lot with Hard Rock, did we agree to give them the parking lot also?
Justin Von Drack, City Legal, are you asking the, their current parking lot that they have now, are you talking the parking garage?
Right, that, that we're talking about closing.
Five years ago, I was on.
Didn't give them, the, the merd went out and bought all that land.
Okay, but.
Oh, the street we vacated.
Is it in the development agreement?
Right, we vacated it, right.
Five years ago, we vacated the street, we closed the street and then subsequently vacated the street. In their development agreement, it states that they will allow traffic to use that basically as a thoroughfare.
Yeah, an access easement, don't they?
It, it's not even an access easement, it's just in the development agreement that they will allow that to happen. We don't own the street, it's not a dedicated street and it's been vacated and so, so right now, what we're talking about is that clause in their development agreement, which allows the public to use that as a thoroughfare.
And Susan, to his point, can you speak a little bit to me about your feelings on whether or not we allow adequate input or solicit enough input from those owners? I mean, because I, I have to imagine, if they got wind, it would close their business, I gotta imagine, or you, sir, obviously you knew it was here. If you thought it was gonna shut down PBR and you thought it was gonna shut down all those, I would imagine you got on the horn immediately and called every single owner and said, you better be there or it will kill us. Hey, Susan, do you feel it?
I, you know, I'm a lawyer and notice is really important, notice is something, I see these, we see these items and we don't see people show up, you never know. You know, if it's because they didn't want to show up or they didn't get notice, but if you start giving notice more broadly in one. But if you start giving notice more broadly in one case, then you have to give notice more broadly in other cases. I was very surprised personally, we only had the owner of the bodega there and not the other people from up the street because in 2013, virtually everyone was there and was very, very vocal about this. You know, I don't know what the answer is. These are probably properties owned in LLCs, and I don't know where they pick up their mail. I don't know how you enhance a list like this, and if you enhance this list, then you've gotta enhance every list. So, I don't know what the answer is, but I was very surprised that we had such a, such small participation.
Well, and that's just it, because when you send notifications out to property owners and they, they aren't Sioux City, you know, from Sioux City and living elsewhere, also, it's the businesses that are driving and paying for them to own that building. So, you know, to not give the businesses notice-
Yeah, but I gotta-
It's a slippery slope.
Your landlord has an obligation, number one. You have a bad landlord, okay? The law is very clear. It may not be good, but the law is clear, and we comply with that law. And Susan's right, if we do that in this case, then we have to do it in every case because we have landlords all over town, and if we're gonna close an alley, and we've got a landlord there and he doesn't tell the tenant that may park the car there, that tenant will argue the same thing, which I understand. But there is, there's also, just like today, I'm here because this is on the agenda, you're here because it's on the agenda, and there are very few people in town that are affected by this that don't know it. So, where are they today? I don't, I'm sure there are more that we're gonna hear from, but-
Well-
But we have, we only have, we're not, if we start that, it's not ever gonna end. And that, we cannot, I'm just telling you that, you've gotta comply with the law. I get that, and I wanna do that, but if you expand that, Susan, you, where do you draw that line?
I don't know how to expand it. I mean, that, but I, but I don't know how to expand it, but we also didn't have really good turnout, you know, whether that was intentional or unintentional. I mean, I was surprised, the newspaper didn't have an article on Tuesday morning about it. I'm not saying the newspaper should have P&amp;Z's agenda, exciting as it is.
Okay, with all that said, I talked to Joe a week ago, I talked to Cindy a week ago, and I think, Joe, I've mentioned to you, talking to, you know, passing the word around to all the bar owners, right?
Correct.
Okay, so where are they at? Is there any other bar owners in here besides Joe? That's what I don't get, because if I was a bar owner and Joe called me and said, "Hey, we have a problem," I would be here right now. And I, and there is no excuse because this is their livelihood, they should be fighting for it.
Right.
And Joe's up here, he's fighting for his, but you know, what can he do for everybody else if they don't care? That's how I look at it. And I talked to Cindy also. I understand where you're coming from. I get it. You know, if nobody, you know, if none of these bar owners get it, I guess I don't get it either. I don't understand.
What is the notification radius? 200 feet, 300 feet?
Longer, bigger than that, I think.
Chris Madsen, Planner. The requirement is 200 feet plus right-of-way. In this case, Wesley Parkway is about 150 feet wide, so it was about 350 feet that notice was sent from the entire Hard Rock site.
Would it be that challenging to send a letter directly to the address in that radius?
Well, ahead and do it, but every time you do that-
No, I'm, in addition to the, I'm talking about in addition to the property owner.
Yeah, well, go ahead.
I mean, I don't know how many businesses would fit in that 300-foot radius, but-
You can only search property of the business itself. That's the problem. And what are you gonna say? Only the, only the people in the downtown are important enough to have that, and if I live in, out by Leeds, I'm not important enough to have that same type of, I hope not. I'm not gonna vote for that. I'm not. I mean, listen, this is a third reading, three readings due at the first time. If people really are concerned, they're gonna find out about this. I gotta believe they already know. But they're gonna find out about, even if it's in a small neighborhood, somebody at home is watching when it's your neighbor and saying, "Pete, you know, we're gonna be affected by this." And so, you, no, I would not, and then you're gonna ask the petitioners every time to spend more money because they pay for the search, right? It's part of their fee.
Part of the application fee.
Right, and so, you're gonna raise that fee on them because you're gonna have to now try to figure out, you know, utility bills or something, who the owner is. And you're still gonna miss people.
We did think about utility bills, that still probably wouldn't catch everyone if utilities are included in the rent, we wouldn't be able to catch all tenants that way, we'd still miss.
The map on your screen is the required notification area highlighted in black, which you can see it picked up most of the Pearl Street District. The actual notification was sent to this property holder, deed holder list, which included a list of 32 property owners.
Well, let's let this gentleman finish-
Okay. You know, I guess if this deal's gonna go through, then, and they were talking about signage, the signage better be big enough to where a car passing at 25 miles an hour through downtown can read and not something with two-inch lettering that they're not even gonna see. And not only would it have to be on Douglas Street, I think you need to put something over, whether it's on Pearl, on the parking ramp, that's on Fifth and Pearl, it's gotta be in multiple areas that show that, you know, we're down there. Because if shutting that street down and it affects 20% drop in revenue, which hopefully it does not, you know, nobody's gonna make that up for us or bodegas or work-in-church, burglies, any of those, any of the bars down there or McCarthy and Bailey's. You know, so it's gotta be a, I guess, a fair game, fair shake all the way around.
I couldn't agree more with you. I think it'll be key, just making sure there's signage, and especially too, for people that are parking on the ramp and going both ways, or especially at Stony Creek. Like, I'm thinking about people that, 'cause I go to a lot of shows at Tyson, and I'm down in that area a lot. And I wanna make sure the people staying at Stony Creek or going to a show at Tyson and are parked there and wanna go somewhere that they know they can walk right across. Like, that's, that's really important to me because I think that's what will be essential for your business and making sure that you don't see that loss of revenue.
Correct.
So, if you have my promise, that's gonna be really important to me as well, and I'll be right there with you to make sure that it's adequate signage.
And the bars down there do feed off of Hard Rock, and, but I think Hard Rock also feeds off of, you know, the bars and restaurants and other businesses in that area. I just don't wanna see that area all of a sudden become the backside of Hard Rock that nobody ends up going to, and after the millions of dollars in development over the years is basically lost. So-
I tell you what, if I saw in the bar business, that's where I'd wanna be, is right down at the Blue Ribbon or right down. And even with the Hard Rock being, having that area closed, that street closed, I think it might be a plus because you're gonna, you're gonna have everybody right there, and they can park in the parking ramp, and they're not walking that far. You know, they're, they're walking from Hard Rock right across.
Right.
You know, so to me, I think it's probably a double-edged sword, you know, 'cause after I talked to you, I thought about that a while, I'm thinking, you know?
Yeah, you know, it's hard to say, are we gonna gain 20% in business or are we gonna lose 20%?
I don't think you're gonna lose.
And I don't think anybody would, would, in any business, would go and lose even 10%.
Well, and here's the deal, Hard Rock has, they have their outdoor concerts going all summer. I'm sure people are wandering around all summer long, going back and forth. It gets cold out, winter changes things, you know, it's not, it's not gonna be as busy, you can't blame that on Hard Rock. It's not their fault it gets cold out, but you know, they're still gonna have concerts. And hopefully by then, Tyson will start picking up and getting, you know, getting their act together. It's gonna work out probably for the best. And I really truly believe, I think it might be for the, for the better for Hard Rock and for you, for all the bars down there.
Hopefully.
We're gonna need to have you wrap up so we can-
Thank you, that's all I got. Thanks.
That story rules, and if one opposes that, we all do, so, just so you know, we're only gonna get first reading today.
Yep.
Is there, are there three readings or only one for this?
What's that?
There are three, okay.
Yeah, if it was a one-reading deal, we'd defer, but-
Okay.
It's a three-reading deal. Hey, Amber, I have a conflict of interest, someone abstain.
Okay.
If it passes four, zero to one, Mr. Moore abstains, I would hope in the next few weeks, we don't meet next week-
No. No, we do not.
That-
The fifth.
That you would work with the merchants down there and try to figure out what, what would make it a lot easier sellable to them, and I know Reagan will be working on that downtown signage thing to make sure that happens so that we have it not only for your area, but for all of downtown. But I think it is important, if you close this, at least temporarily, we do need to do some signage like you do in a construction zone to let people know how to get to the different businesses. I think that's more than a reasonable request. At least, I mean, people gotta learn new traffic patterns, the signs may not have to stay up forever, but at least short-term, we need them up, so.
Would there be any way to get any kind of traffic count in the next two weeks for what's happening in the 300 block of Pearl?
Seriously, they found those two speed deals and put them up on Indian Hills that were supposedly not working.
Working, they got them up quick, yes.
Yeah, that worked out.
Told Pete, man, I tell you.
Those are the ones from Country Club, aren't they?
No.
Oh, they did?
They were on a trailer on Country Club.
No, they weren't.
Weren't they?
They're on a signpost.
Well, they, the batteries failed and they, that didn't work out there.
I think those are the two from Country Club.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we, I couldn't see if we could get the two counters out there and-
Just so we have some kinda idea what the volume of traffic is, I mean, I'm, I actually am surprised, I don't know if Joe's still in here, but that 20% of the people going there would cut through the Hard Rock.
Yeah, it'll be a rough count because you're gonna, you're gonna get some, you're gonna get some parking lot traffic. Well, I guess if you put it at the entrance way, the parking lot, probably be the best way to put it.
Wouldn't be nice if we could-
Sounds to me, I'm being told that there was a 2015 study that was talking about some 5,400 cars, but that's all Pearl. So, I don't know, I don't know how, if, you know, if you break it down into just that section, but that's the number I'm being told from a 2015 study.
Okay, we'll get the rest up down out there.
The one, the one question I would have, and Jim, I'll just pose this to you, you don't have to come up or anything, but maybe just think about with these future readings too, if Hard Rock would be willing to come to the table, I think if the city needs to have additional signage, I would like their financial commitment to helping with that additional signage, to post it around. I think if we can look into and possibly work together on that, that would be, 'cause I mean, if we're trying to close this and the businesses around you are concerned, I don't want the city saying, "Well, okay, now we have to order five more signs and it's gonna cost us that much more." I think if we can be a partnership with that, that'd be great.
Okay, there's a clerical error on items 18 and 19. The P&amp;Z file numbers for the two items are transposed. The correct file numbers are, as I read them, we don't need to make any amendments. Hearing and ordinance rezoning a portion of 325 West 45th Street, petitioners David and Joan Paulsrudd, the P&amp;Z recommends approval of file number 2018-0054. I'll move that.
Okay. This, item 18 and item 19 were both approved unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Commission. There were some concerns raised about the fact that it might be hard for fire trucks to get up there, and I think that when this subdivision would develop, there would be some kind of, one of those limited service agreements where the property developer weighs its right to fire and other city services because of its location. And those comments pertain to both 18 and 19, I know you need to vote on them separately, but we, the record is the same for both of them.
Dr. Paulsrudd, always good to have you in the house.
325 West 45th, I'm sorry, have to come down here to see you.
You can always buy me lunch, you're, especially-
After the day, you won't be lobbying for anything, so. The mayor and I both have our names on that convention center.
You voted for it.
And, and the mayor actually dedicated the convention center because Lauren wouldn't do it. So, I would advocate in the near future that we change the name to the Bob Scott Convention Center.
No. This is the votes here on your project for the day, let's do this project.
I'll second that.
Have I just lost a vote?
You might have four votes up there.
I second that, we're on it.
The Bob Scott Convention Center, it's got a ring to it.
As far as being the young guy, I was, Lauren was the only guy older than me on that council. And I haven't gotten any younger, and that's why I can't take care of all that land anymore, so.
Yeah.
We've got a young couple that wants to build a house, so.
Good.
Awesome.
It's good to see you, David. You're a gentleman and a scholar, one of my favorite people to ever serve with. You did a great job, so, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
And I will buy lunch if you call. If it passes four, zero to one, Mr. Moore abstains, anyone opposed to waiving statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Abstain? I'll move second and third.
Second.
Passes four, zero to one, Mr. Moore abstains. Resolution approving the final plat of Pine Acres, petitioner David and Joan Paulsrudd, P&amp;Z recommends approval of file number 2018-0052. I'll move that. Hey, Amber, both items 18 and 19 are because of conflict of interest.
Thank you.
There, on the information we received, Susan, there wasn't a vote on that. I assume the vote was, do we know?
There should've been two votes. I mean, we always-
Yeah, I understand that, but-
But the record, but basically, we say at the beginning of the first item that the record applies to both of those items when you have a rezoning and a plaque together.
If it doesn't pass first, it can't pass the second. Passes four, zero, one, 20 is the resolution approving the final plat of South Henry Estates, the petitioners Bacon Creek designed, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that.
This was just as an individual who wants to subdivide some property that he owns, we had no one, there really were no issues, no one spoke about it.
That's the old telephone backside, isn't it? So, they sold that ground, really? After all those years? Okay. It's still a telephone building on the Lakeport side, that's why I was curious because they never would sell that ground for anything for-
Sometimes utilities do change their minds, but not very often.
That was a good catch, Mr. Greckin, on the last item. I'm a little delayed in giving my compliments.
I was impressed, too.
Thank you, Susan.
Sure.
We'll go on to the Sulan Street Project presentation. I'm still waiting for it. I think, yeah. A compliment? I still give you that deer in the look, deer in the headlights look, don't I? Hi, Matt, thank you.
Hi, Matt.
Oh, welcome with him. Wow, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah. And contrary to the mayor's, I do have a compliment for my thoughts.
Representing Sulan Human Investment Partnership and the Sulan Street Project today, I just wanted to give you an update on where the street project is at, and more specifically, the detox center. I'm sure you've heard a lot about it, there's been a lot of articles in the journal lately. We had a meeting with Indian Health Service on June 1st, so I wanna give an update. I gave you a packet, and this kind of summarizes everything, but just a kind of a little history on the street project, I know many of you have been involved in the street project. That was really born, it was an effort, collaboration between SHIP, the Sioux City Police Department, Downtown Partners in Mercy, and the Native American community. Really, it was born about three years ago is when it started. And we're just trying to come together as a community to find a good solution to some of the homelessness problems that we have. good solution to some of the homelessness problems that we have. Um, it really was kind of born out of a panhandling complaints that started that fall of 2015. I went to a meeting with, uh, Mr. Lemire here, who is gonna speak to you as well, and we met with the Sioux City Police Department. All decided that we really need to elevate the discussion. So I feel like we've done that over the last three years. Um, we have really gotten the community together on what kind of services are out there for the homeless population, but we really kind of took two different focuses. One was on getting a 365 24/7 shelter, and then the other one was really on this issue of detox. Um, the warming shelter is kind of taking care of the shelter piece of it. They're really kind of moving forward. Uh, we still want to support them, but the detox centerpiece has really kind of gained a lot of momentum over the last couple of years. So back in the day, we did have a detox center here, uh, was funded by Indian Health Services along with, I think, a halfway house. That funding was caught off in around 2007. Um, so the, we had problems then, but I think our problems have gotten much worse over the last several years. If you look in your packet and you look at the data, there's a lot of really good data in here, um, but this data, um, from the Sioux City Police Department, um, it shows you kind of like the breakdown of the public intoxic arrests from 2013 to 2017. And one thing that really jumps out at you from these numbers, if you look at the Native Americans, um, that's almost 50% of all those public intoxic arrests are Native Americans, which is, um, when you think about, there's only probably about 2,000 Native Americans that are in our community living here, um, that's a really disproportionate number. So that's why we really, um, got the Native American community involved and, um, also are trying to get some funding for a new detox center from Indian Health Services. Uh, Mr. Lemire has met with Indian Health Services several times over the last couple of years. Some people from my office have met with them. Uh, we went to Rapid City several years ago and met with Indian Health Services. Uh, and we finally, they've been saying for the last two years, they're gonna come here and visit Sioux City and see the problems firsthand. They finally came back, um, this June 1st, and they met with us at the Ho Chum Center. So, um, some of the results of that meeting, um, we've been working with Congressman Steve King on this issue. He's been very supportive. Uh, one of his representatives, Colby Dewitt, is here, um, with us today, and, um, he also came to that meeting, kind of brokered that meeting between us and Indian Health Services. And one of the things we found was that one of the only ways that we can get funding here, uh, from Indian Health Services for a detox center is through a congressional appropriation. So that is something that we are working on. Um, Congressman King's office and Mr. Lemire have been working together. They developed a letter that was sent to Indian Health Services, and basically what we're telling IHS is you have a commitment to this community because the funding that was here was rerouted to another community. Um, there's very little of that funding. It's about $220,000 a year that is still here to address some of these issues. So, um, that's really the angle with Indian Health Services that we're working on with Congressman King. That is just the beginning of the process, is trying to get a detox center here, trying to get those IHS funds here. Um, we're gonna continue to work on that and get, um, some of the other amenities like the halfway house. Uh, what we are looking at today is, if you look at this and you go to the page that talks about the economic impact, that's like the last page before the last page, annual economic impact, um, you'll see that what we're doing right now, um, which is basically we're taking, uh, public intoxic arrests, we're taking people to either the hospital or to jail, and it's costing our community around $2 million a year. That's not included in that, that's just Mercy. Um, so if we look at a detox center here and we've kind of figured a budget, a preliminary budget of about 1.5 million, that would be a savings of around $500,000 annually. That would also free up our police officers, it would free up the hospitals, um, so that we would have a dedicated place for these people to go to. And I want to be clear, when I talk about detox center, we're not just talking about a detox center that would serve everyone, native, non-native, um, no matter what your socioeconomic background is right now. Um, there's gotta be a better way, a better place for people to go than just doing it at the hospitals. Um, yeah.
Quick question. With the Sioux City Police Department, that figure, what is that cost?
Um, that is just the cost, 87, 875 estimated cost, um, for the arrests and for the officer's time. A lot of times when the officers, um, pick someone up and take them to the hospital, they sit there for hours, um, with, with that person until they're able to get served.
Rex Mueller Police Department, um, that is, we, we calculate a cost per police action, and that's to send one officer. Now, this is obviously just a calculation. Any one of these stops, if, uh, if an officer gets tied down, not only take an individual to jail, but has to take them to the hospital, wait for them to be released, then take them to jail, uh, obviously those would be more significant because we're losing that officer or officers for a long period of time. So it's an inexact science, but it's based on how many calls for service per year we have, uh, per our annual budget. So it's the best we can do with what we know. I'd say that it's probably more costly, uh, by a significant margin than we actually reflect here.
Okay. And I'm seeing that figure now. I'm sorry, I didn't catch it before. Um, but because my, I guess my question too, and I think you'd cut way down on time, obviously, but you would still have the calls, you would just be taking them to a different place, and then it would be much more expedited because you wouldn't have to wait at the ER.
Sure. From, from a police standpoint, uh, the intake in the ER, the intake at the jail, the paperwork involved in that, having a dedicated facility with different layers as we've spoken about here, uh, would free up much of their time, and it'd be a much more appropriate and humane place to take people, especially with substance abuse issues. So we are trying to get to the bottom of the fact that we have criminalized, uh, to some degree homelessness and intoxication, uh, to agree that it shouldn't have been, and we're trying to right wrongs and make sure that we are taking people to an appropriate place that's actually a solution and doesn't perpetuate the problem. The old way that we've done things, clearly not working.
So, so if someone got picked up that, that needed to go to detox, the police department would just take them right to the detox?
That'd be dependent. Uh, on any criminal, other criminal acts that they might have done that would require them to go to the jail, uh, but in the vast majority of these where the only criminal act is maybe public intoxication, uh, then we would prefer this as an option. It would be a quicker option, it would be a more appropriate option that might open the door for that individual to treatment. Uh, so there's a lot more pluses to this, uh, and that's what we need, is we need options for the officers. Again, I, you know, I think I've communicated to this council quite a bit as to how, uh, our approach has been a failure, and we need to look at the root causes of the problem and start dealing with the problem itself, and I think this is a much more appropriate way to deal with the issue.
You know, the other problem we have too is, you mentioned, I believe it was last Monday, how sure you are on police officers, officers because they're, they're, um, in the military and, and that thing. I've done right along where we've, where we've picked up, uh, uh, people that were drunk, I was gonna say it. And not only you pick them up, but then it takes a while to get them. This fellow that, I, I remember this distinctly, he was in a wheelchair. We picked him, we put his wheelchair in the police car, and then we put him, him in the police car, and then he wanted to go home, so instead of taking him to, you know, take him to jail or anything, we took him home. Then he had to get him out of the car, and then he had, I, I mean, it was probably over an hour that, 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 that we were tied up just, just to deliver a person. And that, and if, if they would have had it done any, any kind of bookwork, you're looking, I don't know, I'm gonna guess another hour or half hour anyway. So, you know, we're taking up a lot of time with our police department for something like that where we could be having them out doing something, or if there was a crime or, or anything that they could be answering. So it's a big deal.
The other issue with that is you would have dedicated personnel at this detox center that would be able to work with this person. You'd have wraparound services that would be available. Um, you know, the hospital is not the most appropriate place for these people to be going because they're just being released right out. Nothing against the hospitals, we have some hospital representation here. Um, they do a great job, but they're not equipped to handle this kind of detox. So these people are just cycling through and they're coming back and they're, it's costing us millions of dollars. Um, so when we look at what, what we're putting together as far as detox center, we're kind of replicating the Rapid City model when we, we went and visited Rapid City and saw a detox center they had there. Their model, um, the funding, it's about a $3.5 million facility. Um, it's a little bit bigger than kind of what we're looking at there, and then private donations. Uh, we're looking at about 1.5 million budget right now. Again, that's preliminary. Um, and we are looking at trying to get some funding from Indian Health Services, but that would be seed money likely. If we were able to get that, it'd be startup money, so it wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't be sustainable. So we really feel like we, as a community, we really need to come together as a community and help to figure this problem out. Um, I also, you know, just to, when you think of a homeless person or you think of someone put drunk in the streets, you think of, typically you think of a man, uh, maybe a Native American man. Uh, but, you know, if you, if you really look into this issue, there's a lot of people that you don't see that are out there. There's a lot of women, and there's a lot of children that are out there as well. Um, if you go to Jackson Recovery, you'll see a lot of women that are there that have nowhere to go once, once they leave there. So this issue is more, it's, it's more than maybe what you see. I mean, if you go outside now, you'll see some people out there too.
Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate Matt and, and a goodly number of individuals who've come forward today. I'm very pleased and impressed with that. Uh, I believe that we had, uh, we've had a number of discussions with Steve King's office of late, and I just want to share something he said very recently about our city. Uh, when he came here on June the 1st, he took a look at what we had, and he talked about the buy-in and the number of the scores of individuals who came to that meeting at the Ho Chum Center. And I, I think that he made mention, used the word impressive. And he also said something that made me feel good as a Sulander, and that was the fact that he said, "In our office, we see these kind of initiatives every day. We hear them every week. We listen to a lot of these presentations." And I get the feeling that they look at this one as being a little bit different than that. I think a lot of them, probably, uh, individuals lose interest because of the lack of buy-in. Uh, I, I believe that the congressman office was impressed with buy-in, and I too am impressed, I'm impressed with that. I want to share with you, I did, uh, provide you a letter, and I have to mention the date. It was a Friday the 13th letter, which is a little over a week ago, and that was drafted by Congressman King's office, by, uh, Sue Ed Edmiston, with a lot of input from myself and our community. And that went in, that was delivered on Friday the 13th to the Indian Health Service, and you will have a copy of that. And it, it, it asks all the questions, the pertinent questions that we have had as a native and non-native community, and we want the Indian Health Service, their role in the public trust to serve native people, we want them to address those questions. You will have copies of the questions. And, and so I, you can keep a, a, a running tally of progress we're making. I anticipate that we'll hear from IHS very soon because this, uh, conversation about Sioux City, about Woodbury County's been elevated at their national office because of, uh, their work here. Uh, Matt mentioned something extremely important. I just do this every day. Um, I come across this bridge three or four times a day. I come from the Hard Rock over to this way, and today there were four Native Americans. I'll not judge them, uh, far from it, but there were four, and, uh, they perhaps were inebriated, and I know at least two of them were panhandling. That's from here to the bridge, and I'm not certain what happens in other parts of the city. I am here to again reiterate to you that the native community, or even myself, if nothing else, uh, want to continue in this effort to help our community get well. Uh, native people are like the miner's canary, and the impact that alcohol or drug abuse is having, uh, in, in our native community has never been worse, and if we do not address it and take firm steps, it's just a matter of time until it's in all of our communities and all of our neighborhoods. So I would ask you to continue to act. Last thing I would share, I'm very hopeful. I want you, if you would, to step up and, because I'm understanding, and I want to learn more about it, that the Indian Health Service did something rare lately, unheard of. They took dollars that are appropriated earmarked, so to speak, for the healthcare needs of Indian people across the country, some in urban areas, but those are always controlled by tribes. And, and in, I'm understanding that they appropriated dollars, uh, to Gallup New Mexico because of the issues they deal with there. Uh, appropriated millions of dollars, appropriated dollars to Pine Ridge because of the work at White Clay and the, the closure of those stores there. And that was a precedent. And I want Sioux City to learn about that precedent, be front and center when we talk about that precedent, because if you did it for Gallup, you're certainly going to do it for us. And I think Congressman King feels that way, and I think that we may even get support on the South Dakota side, definitely on the Nebraska side to address the matter here. And lastly, when we do get this detox center, uh, built, I, I want to share with you that it's gonna be unlike anything before it, and I hope unlike anything after it. And we're not gonna approach this just like a, another project, another issue that needs to be addressed. We're gonna put some time and effort into it. And the reason for that, and many of you understand that, and all of us understand that here, I would like our native community to get well. Simple as that. That is what drives us, and that's what drives me. We'll continue until we get the issue addressed. We will get this detox center built, but we've gotta come together, we've gotta coalesce, and we need to continue the work, and we need you on board. We're going to exhaust all opportunities with IHS, believe me. We already have. They hate to see us when we go to visit. We'll exhaust those opportunities. We'll do everything we can. The worst that could happen is a good partnership. The best that could happen is they could come forward. If they decide not to help us, we still need help. And we've talked to the supervisors, we've, uh, we, we're talking to you, we've talked to the community, the greater community, native, non-native. I think the buy-in is there, and we should get about getting this done. So I just come to, I talked to you last week. I said, "Thank you for even paying attention to it," and we'll be back hopefully with more progress. Keep track and keep your fingers crossed about the Friday the 13th letter. I want good, I want our luck to change. So, Mayor, thank you. Everybody, thank you.
It's a good day because Lucy Ellen Bosch was born that day, so July 13th was a good day no matter what, Frank. So, thanks for coming.
One last thing I just wanted to add is that, uh, we are seeing a lot more momentum with this now, obviously, but we also have a private donor in the community that has stepped forward, Anonymous, um, approached one of our, uh, community members and said that they'd be willing to write a big check for this detox center. So, um, we'd like to see something within the year get established.
Is there, I'm not big on building new buildings if there's an existing one. Is there...
There are a couple of existing buildings that could be utilized that have been offered but have not been looked at yet. I agree.
I mean, if you don't have to put up brick and mortar and do, do programming, it makes a lot more sense to me.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
And thanks, Frank.
Jerry Hernandez, 1205 Olaf Court, Sioux City, Iowa. Um, I just want to mention something really quick here. Uh, both hospitals back in 2015 and Jackson Recovery were trying to put something together to present, to be able to take care of this issue of detox. Uh, that did not come together. And the reason for that, because not only was the funding not available for it, it was just bigger than, uh, than what those three entities could handle. So this is a big, this is a community issue, so we have to get more people on board. So we have to have other agencies that are gonna be cooperating after the model that, um, Matt had explained. Um, so with that being said, the fact that, uh, that we have even a private donor that is willing to step up and put some seed money toward this, that just shows the heart of Sioux City and who we are. So, uh, we do have this issue. I just, I wanted to let everyone know that the hospitals did try to do something on their own, but that did not come to pass because it's a larger issue than just those three entities. So, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And by the way, also, uh, you talked about Bob, about where we would be, uh, facilitating something like this. The possibilities are, uh, open. Uh, we might even open up a wing at the hospital for this, uh, and maybe under a 501(c)(3) or somebody who wants to be their own entity can use the building in the meantime while they find something. Uh, but right now, the possibilities are endless. We just need to get somebody, I mean, we just need to get, they send them to the hospital. All we're gonna do is get them stabilized. We, we're not a detox center. So we'll put them right back out, and then they'll be right back in again. So we've got the cycle of the jails and the hospitals, uh, and it's costing taxpayer dollars. Uh, I think we're being bad stewards of money if we don't address this issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. Um, next is Downtown Partners Quarterly Presentation.
Yes.
Did you have the handout?
Okay, sorry, it logged me out, so give me one second.
I didn't get one unless there's an extra one lying around somewhere.
I have an extra if you need it.
Got it. Thank you.
Well, hey, I had two.
Oh, you, oh, Rhonda had them.
Oh, Rhonda's hot.
No, I didn't, I like them. I didn't want to pass them out.
I can, I can send you it electronically for keepsake if you'd like.
Well, looky here, I, I had all of them, I think. Well, looky here, I had all of them, I think. Jesus, I got more.
Mike, you want one?
Sure. Okay.
And we're going. All right, I think we got it. Put it up on screen, we're good to go. Reg and Cody with Downtown Partners and team. Kaitlin Sartino is here as well, and she'll be presenting tonight. I have a couple updates for you, and as I've learned in the past, I will try and keep it quick as possible. However, if you do have any questions, please stop me and let me know. One of the things that we report on this corner is that July 1, we start with a few new faces on our Board of Directors. We go through a ballot process with all of our stakeholders, and joining the board this year will be Jason Allen, Aaron Keel, Angie Schneiderman, and Mackenzie, I'm going to, Malaskowski, anybody?
No.
Malaskowski.
What they said. Also, a new exec-
I know your board member's name, so I'd suggest-
I meet her tomorrow. So I will learn this. I'm going to find a way to work her into every presentation here forward. We also start with a new executive committee. Jennifer Rose Bass will be our president, Julie Shaner will be our vice president, and Chris Jackson will be our treasurer. So these will be their first meetings this month. Just a quick look at our budget starting July 1. The black here is what we have in certain line items for operating, office management, employees, projects. You'll see a difference in this year's budget. We are pulling some over from our surplus to do more with some larger projects, which I'll be updating you on here shortly. If you have any questions, I can get you a detailed line item budget if you're curious. This is the document that you're used to seeing and the one you have in front of you. This is the one I mentioned during our SMID renewal that I would be bringing back to you on a quarterly basis, so that we can just use the same document to update. Wayfinding, this is the biggie right now. Last week, we did receive our preliminary site plan, map, and cost estimates. So we are on track for this. We are going to take this to the board this month. I did share some things with Jim, I know we had talked about this earlier with the Hard Rock piece. There are costs in there for vehicular signage and pedestrian signage that we can work with and help them out with, and vice versa. So we are applying for a couple grants right now to help with the installation and production of these. Right now, we're looking at about, I think it was $492 was the estimate that came in. That is, again, preliminary sites, where we want all of these signs, what each sign costs. So it's going to be up to us in the future to figure out what goes on each sign, and also where they are going to be. Here's a look at what each sign that's on the map would look like. Everything from the gateway signage to pedestrian signage, you'll see on the, your bottom left is a pedestrian kiosk, what that would look like. Inside that would be a map and a business directory on different areas of downtown Sioux City. While you're walking through, you can see what businesses are around you. This is not in your packet, Rhonda, you're looking around like everybody else should have it. I can get you the electronic version as soon as we finalize. Right now, the groups that have been involved in selecting all of these and working on it, city staff included, are going through this packet to make sure that what they've included is what we've asked for. So I will get you a final as soon as that's done. Here's just a really rough gateway signs, what we're bringing in and where we're bringing in folks from the interstate and from other parts of downtown, what our corridors look like, where we're sending them to access small business, city buildings, and some of our public museums and art centers and things like that. So we are planning on, again, they're kind of broken into two sections of wayfinding, vehicular and pedestrian. So once we get them into downtown, we want to make sure that when they're coming out of a parking ramp, they know where to go while they're on foot. Another project is with our lighting project. This one hit a snag as of about three weeks ago. We were told by the structural engineer that the buildings along the Historic Fourth Street corridor were not structurally sound enough to hold festoon lights. We're talking 200 pounds of torque, or pull, whatever they call it, for each building. They got about halfway through and came back to the office and said they're not going to support it. So we are on to Plan B. We're kind of in the process of talking with all the property owners again, trying to find another plan, which some have brought through some really interesting ideas. One of the grants we also went for, we asked for a lighting plan to be included in a grant, so hopefully we can do more with that. But that was this Phase 1, was the festoon. So we're working with Sioux City Go, trying to find another place to do this.
Can you do poles?
What's that?
Can you do poles?
Good, that's one of the options, is get, take the historic posts and just make them into poles and put the lights down lower and hang festoon from the poles. Other things that have been brought to the idea table are projecting lights. You can do a lot with, you know, every business could shine onto the sidewalk what their business is. We could do a welcome to Historic Fourth Street down the middle of the street or up on buildings. There's a lot that can be done with lighting. So there's a lot of options out there, but we really need to work with the property owners and some of the tourism people too, to see what we want for that area. Phase 2, however, is going very well. The demo lights have been installed. I'm going to give you a quick view of two installs were done this week. We were able to get two demo lights from the company, this being along the, what we're calling the pedestrian walkway. It's basically Fourth Street from Historic Fourth to the Pearl District. And when we went through each block by block, and there's a thing they use called a foot candle lighting, like a gauge of how light an area is, there were certain areas that were a lot considerably darker than others. And so our goal was to see how we could light this safely and well with what our existing poles will support, instead of bringing in something completely new. How can we retrofit what we currently have? These two demo lights are in front of the Riviera Theater. If you're out at night, I don't think the council meeting's going to go that long, but if you're out when it's darker, please-
No, look at it.
Please.
They just put a new head on an existing pole?
Yes, yes.
I was just curious, that we have outlets on downtown poles, but we don't think we need them in other commercial districts. That's amazing how that works around here, but-
Before my time, but I hear you.
No, but good.
So yes, these were fitted to our existing poles.
You see, we do it for downtown. We need to do it for all areas of town, folks.
All areas.
Every little community should have their own Christmas lighting, be able to do it.
I couldn't hear you, I apologize. Is Dave still here? Let him take that one. Art murals, also another, as of noon today, we were notified that we did not get the Gilchrist Grant. We were hoping to bring in an LA artist to do a larger piece, but the good news about that is there was a second piece that we applied for with that grant that we do not necessarily need as much funding for, and that is to develop a local artist program. This would match local artists with buildings who are interested in murals and do a annual kind of a shout-out. Iowa City does it really well in their downtown. They do a call for artists every year, and they list probably five or six buildings and building owners that are interested in murals, say what they want on it, what's their budget, and then the artists come in and apply for that property and that building, and there's a selection process. So we can still get that started and do something to launch that for next year. Facades and storefronts, that's another piece to the, to our big puzzle. Working currently on fiscal year 2019, fiscal year 19, which again started July 1, we do have a line item in our budget of $15,000 to work with businesses and storefronts and doing things that, we're trying to encourage them to do things, but let's put some bang behind the buck here, and say if you want to remove the tint on your windows, say it's $100, Downtown Partners pays for half, you pay for half, let's get it done, this will look better. You know, things that we're encouraging, let's start showing them that it's actually going to matter. With that, we're also working with the city to bring to you a capital improvement project sheet. We have about four downtown sheets in the CIP right now, all of which can go together in a better facade program. We've seen it work on Pearl, we've seen it work on, get some return on investment for what's going on with the rest of downtown, if they are larger than, say, our $15,000 line item, and also if they're smaller than TIF projects. So those in-between buildings and projects like that, that we can look at. So we are working with Jeff's department and Marty's to see what we can do there. We'll work on that, again, starting next month, and hopefully get something to you and help them promote it for the next session.
Another thought I had before you go on to one of my favorite parts-
I was going to say, sorry.
With the facade and storefront, an idea was thrown my way a while back, and I don't know if it's been thought of, it probably has, I think it bears repeating, was about having Western Iowa Tech in their building program. I know they've done houses in the past and worked on some of that, but the idea was thrown around that, you know, some of those spaces that people aren't using, and a lot of small businesses, I was talking with a small business owner, and one of the reasons that they weren't investing in a property is they don't have the ability to go in and update and make some of those changes. And the thought was, well, if we could get some of those students to, that want that experience of what it's like to update a space or work on a space, you know, if there was that chance or that opportunity for them to get some of that exposure and help our downtown, I think you'd be able to work with some property owners and say, "Look, this is what we want to do, you know, is that possible, or this is an update we have an idea on."
Yeah, that'd be wonderful. The thing we see too is entrepreneurs or small businesses starting to come in, sometimes the biggest hurdle for them is the space and finding the funds to update the space or to get it ready for their business. So things like that, that we can partner with colleges would be wonderful.
Yeah, I have no idea what that would look like, or if they've ever been contacted for that, but-
Would it be, would it be a possibility to work with the Arts Center and with the new Gilchrist Learning Center? I know they said they were going, they told us last week at the meeting, joint meeting, they would be doing adult classes too with artists, and how about Jason Allen? He's going to become a board member. Is he using high school kids?
He is, actually. Healan is going to be doing the mural on Third and Wesley, and trying to incorporate updating that with all the high schools. So we do have some really strong art connections ever since these murals started coming out. It's just bringing it to the forefront a little bit more. So considering maintenance and all those things as well, but we'll get some more stuff done. Okay, Alex, sorry, drum roll, please. Trash and recycling containers. We are, we have purchased 13 new containers. These are joint containers, they are all one unit, they lock together. What you see for recycling would be blue, but the trash will be black to match our current trash receptacles in downtown. We have 84 trash receptacles in downtown. Adding these 13 will basically move trash, where trash receptacles where we can utilize them better, but also putting these in very poignant and very visible locations, and then working with the city on their marketing plan for recycling to get that awareness going. We were going to do some things in front on the sidewalk, it's like a big, what am I thinking of, a stencil, that helps promote the recycling program that you guys are working on. And then we can work with Matt on the trails. We've also looked at them, him and Melissa have both approved this design, and that the specs for this unit are something that the city can match, and so we're able to all look cohesive. And with that, I bring in team. Kaitlin Sartino.
Team. Sorry. So as of last week, we started, we launched a new networking and open house series in downtown called Stop and Sip. This is where we're asking five locations, five businesses downtown within a block to open their doors from 5:00 to 7:00 PM to the community to find a new way to interact and engage, to maybe get new clientele that they might not already have, or just to educate the community on who's downtown right now. So last Tuesday was the first one. It'll be the third Tuesday of every month. We got great feedback on it from what was, everyone who went downtown. We had people who were just driving by and saw people walking on the streets to businesses that they might not have even known were located on Water Street and Sixth, so Windows, America, and Tent Masters. I had a couple come up to me and were like, "Yeah, we just stopped by, we saw some people walking and had no idea what was going on, and I'm really sorry I missed the last one, but we'll be back next month." And I was like, "Well, lucky for you, this is the first one." So we'll be announcing the next locations in a week or two for the 21st, I believe is that next Tuesday. And with that, we're also launching a series of new block parties in downtown. The first one will be Saturday, August 18, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, where we're showcasing local artists. We currently have 25 already registered wanting to participate in this event, and we have spots up to 40. So we just announced this on the 13th of registration being open for artists wanting to participate. This is a free event for downtown. We're going to have food trucks, we're going to have kids' interactive games. Artists are going to be able to showcase their artwork and sell it to the community. We'll have music, and it's just another way for people to engage with the community and the art aspect, because we do have a big community of artists in Sioux City. And then with that, the people, the residents that live downtown wanted different ways to have block parties that you would typically see in a neighborhood. So then we decided that this would kickstart a series of block parties for them as well. So then with that, the following Saturday, we will do a block party in the Pearl District, so it'll be on Pearl Street, Water Street, and Fourth Street. This will be a bunch of yard games, activities, food, music, just another way for the community to come down and get involved with the businesses in downtown. It's, the businesses are excited, they're going to be showcasing, like, all the businesses in that district or in that block will be participating in one way, shape, or form. We have A1 Auto and Hydraulic Sales are going to do some sort of car show, where they're going to bring in some old cars to showcase to the community. We'll have the bars outside and restaurants being the ones that have food and drinks. And then, I believe this will be coming up to you within a couple weeks as well, for street closure purposes, but this is also free and open to the public. It'll start at 1:00 PM, and it'll go all night. This one, we won't have live music, but we will have music aspects throughout the block party, so to try to showcase that downtown can have events that aren't just live music-based. But we do realize that we like to hear the noises and hear the laughter of the community, so hopefully this will showcase that. And then the last one is Parking Day, so this one is not new to the community. This will be our third year having Parking Day in Sioux City. It is a national and global event. It is, it'll be on Friday, September 21, from 10:00 to 2:00 PM, and it'll be on Pierce Street in between Third and Sixth. So this is where we take up a parking spot and do kind of like a pop-up park theme to kind of showcase on what other ways we can utilize parking spaces besides just for a car. And so this is also another free event for downtown, for the community to interact with different businesses and have businesses come out to the streets to showcase what they can do and showcase different ways that they can correspond with the community. Any questions?
Very good.
Yeah.
I think that's it. That's our thank you slide.
These you will not have to announce every week, she's already done it for you now, okay?
What's that? Wait, what?
I just like reminders.
Oh, okay.
We've got them all on Alex's calendar, so he can update you weekly.
You're welcome.
Yeah. I'll make sure I don't miss them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Update on the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Hanson.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. We have a short presentation. So we're approximately one year into our comprehensive plan rewrite. As you recall, the last comprehensive plan was adopted and approved in 2005. In the last three to four years, we've been working through the CIP process to fund this project. Last year in the spring, we've selected House Seal Levine Associates out of Chicago, Illinois, to assist us with this comprehensive plan update. Again, we've been into this project for about a year now. We've done extensive public outreach and public workshops. So today I have with me Michio Murakovsky, who will be here to give us a presentation on where we've been and what steps we have left over the next six to seven months, including another public workshop that's being held tomorrow night at the Public Museum. So I'll pass it over to Michio. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Michio Murakishi. As Jeff mentioned, I'm with House Seal Levine Associates in Chicago. So this evening, I'm just going to provide you with a brief update on where we are in the comprehensive planning process. So just a little background, as Jeff mentioned, we've been working on the project for about a year now. We have so far completed, last year, in October of last year, we did significant community outreach and engagement. We had several public workshops. We also conducted stakeholder interviews, so one-on-one interviews with, you know, important people in the community that were identified by staff as folks that we should talk to, because they will be able to provide us with insight and a unique perspective that we may not get from others. So I believe we spoke with over 50 individuals as part of that stakeholder interview process. We've also had online a survey that's been available to the community, and to date, we've had over 1,500 responses, so a pretty impressive response rate, so we're very pleased with that. We did, we did. So we've also met several times with the Steering Committee. We'll meet with them for a fourth time tomorrow, and I know Councilman Waters is on that committee, so we'll be seeing him tomorrow as well. Steps three and four, the last time we met with Steering Committee, we presented them a, an existing conditions analysis, which looks at all, what we try to do in the existing conditions analysis is establish a baseline from which we're going to make or create, formulate plan recommendations, so we need to answer the question, "Where are we now?" in order to figure out how we want to get to where we are. Shortly after the existing conditions analysis was presented, we held a- Shortly after the existing conditions analysis was presented, we held a visioning workshop that was attended by maybe forty, forty-five people. That was at the end of February. From that, we developed a set of vision, a vision statement and then a set of goals and objectives that will help guide or provide a framework for what ultimately ends up in the final plan. And then number six, step six is the subarea plan, so I'll be talking a little bit about that in a second. As Jeff mentioned, we have a workshop scheduled for tomorrow from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the Sioux City Public Museum. Where we're gonna start to discuss with the community what their vision is, what their ideas are for two areas in particular, Gordon Drive, as well as what we're calling the Midtown Subarea. Sorry. So I just want to briefly go through our initial thoughts on the subareas. The purpose for tomorrow's workshop is to get the community's input on what they'd like to see in these areas. So what I'm gonna show you now are just kind of our initial thoughts that we've put together to help guide the discussion tomorrow. So this is the boundary of the Gordon Drive subarea. What you see there, the colors there are existing land use. This next slide, what this is, is our, our initial framework plan for land use for this area. So moving from west to east, you'll see we've got in yellow or orange there what we're calling the Pierce and Nebraska Entertainment District. In the red, in the middle there, is a downtown gateway, and to the right of that is industrial transition. So our initial thought here is that, you know, you've got a lot going on, obviously, at the Tyson Events Center. We see that orange area as a, as a natural place for kind of continuing that entertainment destination type feel. So if you go see a show or something at the Tyson Events Center, maybe you wanna have dinner and just, you could cross the street. I think while I am a big fan of Walgreens, you can get better food probably at a restaurant, destination type restaurant. And so what this here is, this here is showing is our initial thoughts on, on urban design. And I know this is all kind of small and it's hard to read, but basically what we're trying to demonstrate here is where improvements can be made. The arrows represent streetscape improvements, what you see, the little stars, those represent gateway monuments. Obviously, the presentation you just saw, you know, you are working on initiatives like this already. So I just, I think it's important to point out that, that everything has already been done, trying to build off of initiatives currently in process. So what we'll do tomorrow is we will be handing out maps, looking, something like this. And then we'll walk folks through a workshop exercise to basically answer three questions. One, what are the sites that you'd like to see redeveloped? What are the sites that you think could be catalysts for redevelopment in these subareas? The second question is, what are the priorities? Obviously, a comprehensive plan is a long-term plan. This, these, none of these sites are gonna be, or none of these subareas are gonna be developed overnight, or maybe in five, one year or five years. We're looking out long-term, so we want to try to establish priorities. The third question we're gonna try to answer is, what would you like the development to look like? What's the character of it? When we get these answers from folks tomorrow, we will go back to the office and we'll start preparing visualizations, 3D visualizations to try to address some of those, what we heard in terms of what you would like the development to look like. Second subarea, calling Midtown. So you can see this is, covers a pretty large area centered around Bishop Healan High School. What you see there are the existing land use, so obviously kind of a mix of uses, probably retail and residential being the most prominent outside of the high school. For this, for this subarea, we see four main land use character areas. Starting with the orange, we're calling that Seventh Street Commercial. The blue is Bishop Healan Neighborhood Residential, so just more continuing what's already there in terms of the scale and density of the residential development. In the red, we're calling that Pierce Street Commercial. And in the purple, that is called, we're calling that Midtown Connections. So the idea there, let's try to tie that into the downtown area. Let that serve as a transition from downtown's more intense uses to the more residential and neighborhood-oriented commercial existing in the subarea today. Again, here, kind of hard to figure out what's going on, seeing this for the fir-, if you're seeing this for the first time. But just in summary, what we're showing here is, you can see the arrows. Obviously, you've got a significant project underway on Seventh Street already, I believe, eight and a half million dollar project. So, you know, we, what we're showing here is enhancements that complement what's going on on Seventh Street, on Pierce and Nebraska. We're showing pedestrian bridge improvements along the Perry Creek. And then some gateway signage entering and exiting from the north and the south on Pierce and Nebraska streets. So like Gordon Drive, we're showing, we're gonna be showing folks some, our initial thoughts on potential catalyst sites. And we'll go through all of these. We'll ask if there's other sites that they'd like to see redeveloped or enhanced. And then we'll try to establish some sort of priority, prioritization, as well as the character of the, of the type of redevelopment they would like to see. And mind you, that, you know, we're not recommending that these sites be redeveloped, but if they were, how would, you know, how would you like the shape of that? How would you like that redevelopment to take shape? So real quickly, just want to go through the upcoming events as well as the next steps in this process. So tomorrow, we've got a pretty full day. Meet with staff in the morning to discuss, to discuss specifics on the project and coordinate on other upcoming events and coordinate on scheduling, finally wrapping this thing up by the end of the year. We'll meet with the Steering Committee at the library tomorrow at noon. And then we'll be back in this room at four tomorrow for the PZZ, PZC meeting. And then as I mentioned, the subareas workshop is tomorrow from 6:30. So we're looking forward to that very much. So there's three step.
Right there, one second. Esteemed members of the media and press, if you all will please advertise that and have that on every station and everywhere possible, I would greatly appreciate it. Okay? Comprehensive plan meeting tomorrow night, 6:30 to 8:30. Okay? It's at the museum.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So three steps remaining in the project. When we get back to the office here, we're gonna immediately jump into finalizing the subarea plans, but then also starting our community-wide plans and policies. So the community-wide plans and policies are essentially gonna serve as the basis for what will turn into the chapters of the final plan. So you'll have one on transportation. You'll have one on community facilities, parks and open space, land use and development, et cetera. Step eight, implementation, implementation strategy. So once we come up with all those planning recommendations, we need to figure out a way to implement them because they are pretty meaningless if you can't realistically implement them. So that will start in September. And then by the end of the year, we should have a draft plan and then ultimately a final plan, once we get that finalized with the Steering Committee and staff, that will hopefully be in front of you all for adoption. So with that, are there any questions?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Citizen concerns. You picked a bad night to come, Flora.
I sure did. But I'm here.
And we're not done yet, because Alex doesn't let us get out right away, that's for sure.
I believe it.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Flora Lee, and I'm running for Woodbury County Board of Supervisor. And what I have been doing since I announced my candidacy is that I have been traveling Woodbury County and visiting with each city council in Woodbury County. I have three left, and you are one of the three. And I, you know me and my equity issues, so I want to be fair. Even though I live here and I know most of you or all of you, I want to be fair because this is also the community I live in. I decided to run because I always believe in fiscal responsibility, but I also believe in this community. I've lived in Sioux City my entire life, and, and I love my community. And I want to always be a part of it and to do something that's good, to make things better in Woodbury County and in Sioux City. Fiscal responsibility is always an issue. It's a given. You all know that. I've heard that all night tonight about, we, we want to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. The mental health issues, you've talked, they were talking about that tonight, and that's a big issue. And it's not just Sioux City. It's in the entire county when I look at things that are going on throughout the county. And the poverty rates that we have throughout Woodbury County also, it's tremendous. The access to emergency medical services, that, that's key. And, excuse me, and I, especially out in the rural area. I think within the city, we're kind of taken care of for the most part, but outside, we're not as well-equipped. But, you know, whatever happens outside of Sioux City, it happens, it impacts Sioux City, I believe. We need safer roads and infrastructure, and I will tell you something, I have learned about gravel and what kind of rock and road. I have met with every department head with the county so that I could get educated on what I need to know. And public safety is always an issue. And what I've noticed is that the Sheriff's Department is out in the counties. And I know Chief Mueller's down officers, but the Sheriff's Department is also down like eighteen officers. So I know we can't build that up, but right away, or, but hopefully we can come up with a plan so that we're replacing those folks. Some people say I'm running against my opponent. I'm not. I'm running for the citizens of Woodbury County. I believe in civility and I believe in collaboration. And I believe that the city, the county, and the school districts and the cities in Woodbury County can all work together and better utilize the cities, the taxpayers' dollars. Not why I'm here. I would love that, but that's not why I'm here. I'm just here because I want you to know why I'm running and who I am. And thank you for your time, and I have some information.
Thank you, Flora.
Thank you, Flora. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
I'll endorse you.
Pete?
Two, two quick things. Who's, who's heading up Lime Bikes? I'm just curious for status and update on that. What's, is that Downtown Partner or is that Parks and Recreation?
Yes and yes.
Yes and yes. I, I kind of figured we'd have them by now, but what's?
Oh, sorry. I figured we would too, Pete. We have a call with them on Wednesday. Angel and I are going to talk to them. They requested a call because I asked for an update prior to this council meeting, so I could update you, but I hadn't heard back from them.
Okay.
So as soon as we have that call, I can get you, Angel could probably do some sort of memo to keep you up to date. If that's okay?
I just didn't know where it was, and I've had people ask.
Agreed. I'm half tempted to start spray painting some bikes and putting them out there.
Yeah. Thank you. The other thing I wanted to mention, I've had, I had a couple of phone calls over the weekend from a concerned citizen. It was a little, was very concerned about this issue of blowing grass that's freshly cut out into the street. He asked me if I would go look at a couple of locations. I did. I think maybe I, if I can, I'll give them to you, and maybe tomorrow morning Inspection Services can take a look at it. But just so people know, there is a municipal ordinance that prohibits that. So you really shouldn't be doing that. And I did go up and take a look at this location, and it was pretty obvious and pretty thick. And so he has a genuine concern, and if we could at least follow up on that and maybe knock on the door to tell people that, you know, please don't do that, but. I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. That's it.
Pete, I think you should throw on the uniform for old time's sake and go do it.
I don't think I need the uniform.
I think it'd be effective, chief, don't you think?
I don't think I need the uniform, but I'll take the chief with me just in case.
There you go.
I have one thing. I got a phone call last week from Larry Rubida. His wife took her dog to the dog park, Bacon Creek, and the dog ended up getting killed by two wot-wirlers. And one wot-wailer was muzzled, the other one wasn't. And he's gonna be coming back here in two weeks. I'd like to have our, our city legal look into it, look at the ordinance the way it is now, and if we can change it into something else, I think we should. Dog parks.
Why do we have to change that?
Well, I don't know. I, what?
Why haven't we done something? Here's my concern. I had a call from another person who was out there and witnessed that. And he was, he says, stand your ground. I'm taking a gun. They go after my dog. And I tried to break that dog up. I'm shooting the dog. I want you to know that. And I think he's probably justified. So what are we going to do about that situation? Because that cannot, we cannot allow that to happen in that dog park, or we just will?
Yeah, dog parks are supposed to be safe havens, I thought, you know. And to have somebody bring a dog that, that's muzzled into a dog park is absolutely crazy to begin with.
Well, it better be muzzled than have the one that wasn't. So, do you know about this, chief?
Yeah, I was made aware of this occurring, but I don't have a lot of details.
Well, I want, I want, I don't care when he comes. That's not the point. But I had it on my list to bring up today too, because I'm afraid it's gonna turn into the Wild West out there if you don't have Cindy get this thing under control.
Well, I think the purpose of the dog park is kind of in conflict or led to what happened and that, you know, you, you, the leash laws don't apply within that spot, so it's harder for the people to bring their dogs to control them. So, I mean, I, I, I think if that was revisited, yeah, you definitely have to.
Vicious dog ought to be a vicious dog in the city. I don't.
No, and that would, that would deply. That would absolutely apply, that we could investigate that. However, this happening, the fact that this actually did happen and that, that residents or dog owners are expressing that kind of concern is problematic to me.
I believe that the ordinance said that it's, it's the same in, in a dog park as it is outside of a dog, dog park.
And I want to know if we're gonna do anything about this.
There's only one dog rule that doesn't apply, and that's the leash law.
Leashes, yeah.
So they can be off their leash, but they still have to keep them under control.
Well, the sad part.
Are these dogs registered? Do you know anything about this?
I don't have any information to check. I did hear about it, but I don't know.
Okay, well, let's get some information. Rhonda, why don't you get, you know more than anybody does. Rhonda, why don't you get with the chief? Why don't you get with the chief and, and Lisa, make sure the dogs are licensed, number one. If they're not, that right there is a problem.
Well, we have the name of the person. We, we have all the information.
Get with the chief and Lisa, and let's see what we can do.
Well, and Lisa talked to, talked to Larry today.
Okay, because I don't want to see, I don't want.
No, no, not that Lisa. Lisa Place. So Lisa will have the information.
The mayor is saying get to her.
The Wild West. Yeah, because, you know, I think under the stand your ground, if that dog goes attacking his dog, I think he's got a right to probably defend.
And the sad, the sad thing is, the dog that got killed was a little Shih Tzu. And, and you got a wot-wailer going after it. I mean, it, it bit it and it punched its lung.
Yeah, so, okay.
It was terrible.
Get with them on this and.
Absolutely terrible. Let's see. One other thing, I got a phone call this afternoon from a gale, and she was walking the trails down by Sony Creek, Dave's, Famous Dave's, and there was trash everywhere. And Matt took care of it right away. He said it's the worst he's ever seen. So, it was terrible.
Where is that, Rhonda?
Right next to, between, what, Mill, Shaw, Hammer and Putz, that building.
Behind Famous Dave's.
There's a trail runs way out, right out behind.
Okay, that's, anyway, thank you, Matt, for doing that, and I appreciate it, and keep up the good work. I'm good.
Okay, I got about a dozen. I want to get through.
You got about six.
You got three minutes is what you're selling it. You got three minutes is what you're selling it.
Kidding, kidding, kidding. So I'm joking, but...
I've been leaning all night. It ends right now.
I'm joking, all right. So the only thing is that I would emphasize and I would please beg the news stations, um, I, I know you all are on your phone tweeting it out right now because you're very excited about it, which I appreciate. I will give you some retweets. Um, please, about this comprehensive plan, I think public input is essential. Um, it's something that I think about all the time. You have people that talk about, "Oh, I wish Sioux City was this," or "We should do this." Well, this is your opportunity. Okay? And it really bothers me when, oh my gosh, I don't even want to say it that way. Did anyone see, hear Bob right there? It really bothers me when, never mind. When people don't show, or not enough people show up, or they didn't do the survey, or they weren't a part of that. Like, I want to make sure that they at least know when they make that decision.
When is it?
So it's tomorrow night. Six thirty to eight thirty. It's at the Public Museum. So, and I would say too, um, members of staff, if you could come, I, I know, I, I've seen Marty and some others there as well. I really do appreciate it when even staff comes too. I think that's helpful. Um, and then, I know mayor, I'm on a leash.
No, no, for that kind of money, they should come, but go ahead.
And then, um, the last thing that I, you know that last thing, last thing that I would say is, um, Morningside College hosted this year, um, an event called the Catalyst Collective. And it's an event where it's high schoolers and middle schoolers from the tri-state area. I think it's a lot of, or mostly, um, South Dakota, because there was a program in South Dakota. It was at USD previously and they were looking for a new home and Morningside stepped up a place and they would have it. Um, but it's a program from seven thirty PM to eight thirty PM at Epley Auditorium. And it's these talented and gifted students that came, they're there for two weeks, working on it, and then they present some of the things they've learned. It is, I went last year and it was just truly inspiring. Um, so if you have free night or something, a free hour there, I would really encourage you to check it out. It's kind of...
When is that again?
So it's seven thirty PM to eight thirty PM. It's at this great college, um, over on eastern side of town, Morningside College, uh, Epley Auditorium.
Every, what date?
Thursday, this Thursday, sorry. This Thursday.
That's it?
And I tell you what, oh, no, one more thing, I love it.
Oh, got it.
You all got an email about it, so I can be really brief. Uh, the wiffle ball tournament is back. Um, so get excited. I'm looking up here at, uh, five players that were on the team last year.
No, no, no. He wasn't.
No, I'm looking at five. We got the four of us and Amber.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Not going to give me again, because I'm not taking a chance on ruining my new knee, so...
Well, you're, you're the coach.
Stupid.
So mayor, mayor will be out there coaching.
Wait a minute. Excuse me, mayor, he's in a wheelchair. Now, don't give me no excuse.
I was out there running base...
That would be good.
If you hit by throwing a bat, a plastic bat or a helmet. Yeah, and the work comp is not that great either, so...
Anyway.
Yeah, when is it?
So it's August something.
Twenty-sixth, there was a email today from Jessica.
It went out, yeah, it went out today.
Might have been one of those that PD raced again. I've got four of those being canceled things on. I still don't know how I did that, but I...
I canceled the comprehensive plan.
These meetings are canceled.
I have no idea how I did that.
I thanked him for it. Did you get my email back?
He canceled four meetings today. I don't know if you knew that.
He canceled the meeting today too. What did I cancel today? The council meeting and the comprehensive plan, yeah.
What's going on?
That's what I said, thank you.
Chief, it'd be cool to get a team out there if you guys don't have a team already, a police department.
Yeah, they did last year.
I thought they did too, yeah, exactly. Um, because it'd be great to see you guys go up against...
Go easy on firemen, chief. You beat them in everything. You got to go easy on them.
Remember though, you got to come either and go in your second.
We, we came in third, because there was three teams.
Mayor's like, don't even bring here. So that's all I got, mayor.
Well, I don't play.
But we're bandit shirts, if we're honest. Yeah, you're right. You got my vote, Flora. I just want you to know that. I can endorse you if I want.
I just want to congratulate the chief and your department on the, uh, unity in the community at Dale Park. I wasn't there.
I didn't know that, I'm sorry.
But the reports on it were, were just really good. Well, they said there were what, over twelve hundred people? Is that right on the media reports?
Yeah, I don't know how the numbers are gathered, but it was, uh, definitely bigger event than last year. So we built on last year's success. It was terrific. I saw Alex there.
And last year was so hot. This year was perfect.
Perfect, yeah. And so...
But thanks for all that you do in that regard throughout the community in all areas...
Well, I'm still drying off from the dump tank. I'm pretty sure there's still water in some places in my...
But seriously, I, I do think it's extremely important that...
No, and that, and that's a, a great conduit. Unity in the community is a fabulous, uh, organization that we participate with to do that and we will continue that. We had spoken at that event, there's going to be a community forum as we've done for the last several years, uh, in the fall, uh, and we'll pick a topic and, and throw that out to the community. So as usual, the police department will put themselves out there for any criticism or improvements or thoughts that might make us better and better able to relate to the community members, so...
The only thing I might not do this year that I did last year is when I had one of your officers put me in handcuffs. You put me in handcuffs, I think.
I don't think it was me, no. I couldn't have been there.
One of your officers put me in handcuffs.
We're not going there, let's keep rolling.
And then he called Bob the lawyer.
Did you ever give mine back that I loaned to you?
Wow, I think Flora Lee was right. We need to take this to the coffee shop. But thank you, I wanted to thank you on that. The other, the other item, Mr. Carney, I just, I want to thank you for the work you've done on the convention center and on the parking deck, but I, you know what keeps hitting home and I wanted to say this earlier and I forgot because I have to process things? The subsidy at the convention center, I just want to see it to go, I want it to go down. And now with the levels of expense where costs we're looking at, it's going to take longer, isn't it? Isn't there kind of a...
Well, and Donna said after six months that it was...
But anyway, the subsidy, let, let's get it to go down. Yeah, but it's just, I'm very, very, very unfortunate that it turned out the way it did, so... That's all I have. Mr. Mayor, no, no, Alex is done.
Go back, go back, go back.
Three minutes. Three minutes.
Mayor, last thing.
I got work, but move it.
I wanted to tell everyone, uh, because this is one of my favorite events and I forgot to put it on my calendar. Greek Fest.
Oh, yeah.
Is this weekend.
That's right.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Definitely get up to the Greek Orthodox Church. It's some delicious food.
It's a lot of fun.
It's definitely a jewel of our community. I appreciate they do it every year, so... And, that's right. Gosh, Dan's got my back tonight, so, yeah, I went to Unity and Community.
I'm going in about a minute.
And the band show, the municipal band. I just wanted to say that it was great. There's no more, um, coming up. It will be next year, mayor, but it was a great time, Dan and I were out there.
Good turnout.
Great turn.
Great music.
Beautiful day.
All right.
Sorry, adjourned.
Second.
What can I add to that?
Waters?
Hi. Where do they find all the time to go to these things?
Hi.